With beautiful surroundings, comfortable gathering spaces, and picturesque views, the campus of Atria Woodbrier offers the standard of senior living, long preferred by the most discerning older adults on Cape Cod. Atria Woodbrier Place, a new state-of-the-art building, offers independent and assisted living options with luxurious amenities, an environmentally friendly design, and construction. Atria Woodbrier, 389 Gifford Street, Falmouth, 508-495-5500.
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, March 31, 2014, meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. The Board is returning from an executive session to the open session. We invite you all to rise and join the Board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Brent Putnam. I'm Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Selectman Pat Flynn and Town Manager Julian Susso. To my right is Vice Chair Doug Jones, Selectman Kevin Murphy, and Selectman Rebecca Moffett. If you have a cellphone or some other device that makes noise or spontaneously cries out during our meeting, we ask that you silence it for the duration of your time with us. Please refrain from any private conversations here in the room or immediately outside the room in the hallway because it can distract and interrupt the proceedings. We do have a speaker's policy, a copy of which is on the door and on the lectern. If you'd like to speak this evening, there will be opportunities for public comment. We ask that you wait to be recognized by a chair, that you direct all of your comments through the chair when you're recognized, and most importantly, that when you come to the lectern, that you identify yourself for the record because, though we may know who you are, it doesn't mean the folks at home or our recording secretary do. If you'd like to record the meetings, you may do so using audio. You simply have to notify the Board of that. If you'd like to record the meeting using video, you will need to request permission. At this time, is there anyone who'd like to record the meeting? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which are announcements and proclamations. We have a few announcements. There are precinct meetings this week, for anyone so interested. Town meeting, of course, is next week, 7:00, at Lawrence Junior High School, next Monday. Precinct meetings this week, Precinct 1 and 2 are meeting on Thursday, April 3, 7:00, at the Herman Meeting Room at the Falmouth Public Library. Precinct 3 is meeting on Thursday also, at the Gus Canty Recreation Building in Room 1 on the second floor. That's also at 7:00. Precinct 4 is meeting Wednesday, April 2, 7:00, at the East Falmouth Elementary School. Precincts 5 and 6 are meeting Thursday, April 3, 7:00, at the West Falmouth Public Library. Precinct 7 is meeting Wednesday, the 2nd, 7:00, at the Waco Congregational Church Hall. And Precincts 8 and 9 are meeting on Wednesday, April 2, excuse me, 7:00 PM, at the Barnstable County Fairgrounds Administration Building.
Just to add to that announcement, I have heard back from the Board of Selectmen that we will have representatives of each one of those meetings. If you want to go to additional ones, certainly if you please do, but thank you for responding and helping us set that up.
Thank you for doing that, Doug. We also have some committee vacancies. The Affirmative Action Committee has two vacant positions. The Board of Assessors has one vacancy. The Building Code Board of Appeals has two positions. The Cable Advisory Committee has two. The Cape Light Compact has one alternate position. Conservation Commission has one full-time and two alternate positions. Cultural Council has six positions available. The Design Review Committee has two alternate positions available. The Commission on Disabilities has two positions. The Finance Committee has one. The Historic Districts Commission, excuse me, has one position and one alternate position. Human Services Committee has three positions. Solid Waste Advisory Committee has one. The Steamship Authority Port Council has a vacancy. That is a single position. The Substance Abuse Commission has four vacancies. The Town Building Committee has three. The Transportation Management Commission has three. And the Water Waste Committee has one. Anyone interested, please come to Town Hall. The Selectmen and Town Manager's office fill out an application, and we'll schedule an interview for you. Are there any other announcements from the Board or from the Town Manager's office?
No, sir.
All right. And with that, we come to the public comment section of our meeting. During every meeting of the Board of Selectmen, we reserve 10 minutes early on in order to allow the public to speak on items that are not on our agenda. If you'd like to speak, you'll be limited to a maximum of two minutes, and once we reach the two minutes, well, unfortunately, you have to stop so we can allow others to speak. And once we reach the total time of 10 minutes, we have to move on to other agenda items. So is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak?
Mr. Chair, just before we get into that, just to let the public know that last week when we were discussing our policies, that we did vote to move this from being a draft policy to establishing it as a longer-term policy.
Thank you for the reminder. Anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Going once? Going twice? All right, then we'll move on. Next item on our agenda, we have the minutes of March 24, the public session.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes of March 24, public session.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, to approve the minutes as presented. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. And then we have the meeting minutes for March 24, 2014, the executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the executive session minutes as presented for March 24, 2014.
And are we releasing or not releasing?
Not releasing.
And not releasing to the public? Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? And it's unanimous. All right, and that brings us to the summary of actions. We have, let's see, three items on here. The request for special event, this is the Falmouth Classic Car Club, Gus Canty Recreation Center. They are still requesting Sunday, July 6, 2014. There is a representative here if the Board has any questions.
Let's hold for location.
Item number two is a firm appointment to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce Representative Member of the Gulf Advisory Committee. And then three is to finalize the Town Manager's goals, a copy of which has been provided.
I move items two and three to be approved.
Second.
A motion to approve items two and three. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. Mr. Murphy, you held item one.
I just, it's just showing back up here as the date, and I didn't know which location we're approving this evening.
They are still asking for Marina Park, I believe. Would you like to say a few words?
Did you all get a copy of this? You did. If you give me a word that you'll read it, I'll dispense with it because I know you're busy here. So my first question is, did the other three dates get approved?
They did.
They're approved.
They are approved.
Okay. The only thing with the 6th, if we could get it, is that for 17 years, we've been there, and we understand that we're sort of asking for a lot, having four days where four days out of the summer where others don't. So we're willing to compromise. However, the 6th is still open, and we'd like to get it, if we could, just to stay there. Now, I guess the reason why that we can't have it is the traffic that's there and what we will do to the field.
Those are some of the issues that were raised, yes.
Okay. So if I can address them. One, the traffic, I don't think that because of the way it is, the way the road is situated, I don't think the traffic will be any different than normal traffic going through there. Once the cars come in, they come in early, and they're set for most of the three or four hours that we're there. So the only other traffic would be the traffic of people coming around and parking. And we really don't get that many. We get a lot of foot traffic, we get a lot of bike traffic, but we don't really get a lot of car traffic that comes to us. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. Clearly, there's other events that you're having there that will draw much more traffic than we'll ever think of drawing. I mean, the next week, you're having, is it a music festival or something like that? With 5,000 people will be coming? We're lucky if we draw five to 600 people. We get about 80 cars if we're doing good, and in the 80 cars, there might be two people to a car that's 160. So I doubt very much if we're even close to 700, 800. As far as the field goes, in the 17 years, have you ever heard a complaint from us that we've destroyed the field? So I don't think that we would do that at all. So if we could have the 6th, we'd appreciate it.
Any questions from the Board?
We'll do our best to keep everything.
Talking about Marina Park now, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I think my issue, and it's with everyone that is asking for space and time in our town, is the people that will come to your activity are not walking. They are in their cars, driving into that area. So that is always my issue, is where do all of those cars of the people who are coming to your activity, where do you propose they park?
Okay, so have you ever been to one of our shows?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
Oh, that's great. Please come again so I can...
So you can show me.
I'll show you around. I'd love to do that. And maybe we'll bring back some memories of cars that you grew up with.
Oh, okay.
Really, there is not that much car traffic, and they do find a place to park. I mean, I can't say I'm around looking where they park, but they do find a place to park.
I know they find a place to park. That's my issue.
But however, if I can say to you, it's going to be no more than some of the other events that are there.
You have a strong point down there.
The only reason I think the Board had a little angst last week was 4th of July weekend.
And I can understand that.
And if the fireworks get carried over because of inclement weather, it wouldn't be on the 4th, it would be on the 5th, which is the night before your show. And fireworks, 4th of July weekend, in the community as a whole, has more people than any other weekend of the year. So I, Road Race has people for one day. 4th of July has them for the entire weekend. With, anyone who owns a home here has that house full that weekend, whether you're a runner or not, so...
And thank God at 11:00 Sunday, they're leaving. And that's when our show is.
Well, I don't know. Let's hope not. But anyways, that was the only angst that the Board had.
If the fireworks are going to be on Sunday, or if the fireworks are going to be on Monday, I would agree with you, but usually people will be leaving, and so that's why, in fact, we probably would have less people showing up because they wouldn't want to come for the traffic. And the only reason that we don't, I mean, if we have to use, I don't want to tie all these people up here doing it for a car show, but if we have to use Gus Canty, we'll use it. I tell you what we'll do if you want. If the fireworks get postponed because of rain, I'll talk to Helen, she'll reserve it for us, and we'll go to Gus Canty. Is that fair?
That sounds reasonable.
I think that's very fair.
I think that's a fair point.
I think that's very fair.
Okay. So I'll go to Helen and tell Helen that you people agree that if the fireworks are canceled because of rain...
We'll tell her that. We'll let her know.
All right.
So then, it sounds like the Board's in agreement. Could I have a motion to approve this for July 6, assuming that, and if the fireworks are delayed by rain, then the rain date location, if you will, for the car show will be the rec center?
Will be Gus Canty, the 13th, has air.
I'll make that motion.
On which day?
On the 13th.
On the 13th, not on the 6th, okay.
Not on the 6th. We'll just stay away from...
Okay.
All right, we won't use the 4th of July weekend.
Okay. So the 6th at Marina Park, if the fireworks are delayed, 13th at the rec center.
Right.
So make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please read this.
You're very reasonable.
And use us, use us.
Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have an application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic common victor or license for the Casino Restaurant LLC doing business as Casino FX 286 Grand Avenue. The applicant's...
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I want to make a disclosure that on the whole of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license...
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The applicant's representative, I presume? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Bob Hament. I'm a Falmouth attorney. I represent the applicant and the licensee, Casino Restaurant LLC, which runs the Casino FX Restaurant at Grand Avenue in the Heights. And the application before you is for a simple change of manager. Mary Lund is here to my right. She's with me. She's been the Assistant Manager of the Casino Restaurant for the last three years. She has six years of experience in the liquor industry before that, and other management experience. She, of course, is TIPS-trained. She's also been the designated Crowd Control Officer under the statute. I neglected to give a copy of her certification, but I have that with me, so I'll give you that. So I think she's eminently qualifying for the position. If you've got any questions, of course, we'll be happy to answer them.
We do have official statement from the Police Department that they have done a Cory check, and they have no issues or concern.
Questions from the Board? Thank you, sir.
I would move approval of the change of manager of the Casino Restaurant LLC, DBA Casino FX.
Second. Motion, a second. Any further discussion from the Board? Any comments from the audience? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thanks for making it so easy.
Congratulations. Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a request for assigned variance. These are off-premises signs for the Rotary Club Pancake Breakfast. This is something that comes to us on an annual basis. Any questions from the Board? Is a member of the Rotary Club here?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. All right, and the next item on our agenda, we have a presentation from the Joint Base Cape Cod. Good evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, here.
By all means. Whether you're speaking from there or speaking from here, if you could just take the microphone with you, it helps the folks at home here. It's not so much for us, but for the folks at home so they can hear.
Okay.
And we'll get the lights. Thank you.
One more. That's...
I stand here.
I can't see.
Stand right there. So I don't have to carry the microphone on?
Yeah, that's better.
Can you hear me okay? Is that fine?
Yes, oh, yes.
All right. So I'll do some quick introductions. I'm Colonel Greg McDonald. I'm the commander for the Army side of Joint Base Cape Cod. General Faber is the commander of the 102nd Air Force side. Captain Steve Torpey is the Coast Guard commander, and Lieutenant Colonel Walt Jipman is the 106th Air Wing commander. And they all brief on their portions. So we thank you for having us tonight. We'll keep this, sticking with the principle of efficiency. I'm very impressed with your process so far, and I think we'll have to take a few notes and bring it to some of our meetings. We'll just walk through, and if you have any questions, I guess we can feel free to ask. Also, I apologize, but we have our environmental folk here as well, Mark, who's Mark Begley, who's a Cape Cod resident, has been with the environmental side for many, many years on Camp Edwards. Okay, so quick overview, Joint Base Cape Cod, formerly known as Mass Military Reservation, proclamation signed by Governor Val Patrick several months ago, making it a joint base. Massachusetts recognition only at this point. You can see the location here, everybody knows where it is. Two, kind of bring it in here, the other's not right there, and the rest is primarily Camp Edwards, an army training facility. So the economic impact, just to give you an idea, of the multiple military installations in Massachusetts, Devens, Westover, Barnes, Devens being Army Reserve, Westover, Barnes, Air Force, Hanscom, and Natick Soldier Systems Center up in Natick, Massachusetts, and Joint Base Cape Cod, gives you an idea of the economic impact that all these installations bring to Massachusetts. Obviously, locally here, Joint Base Cape Cod employs roughly almost 3,700 folks, and total economic impact is about 400,000 plus. These are 2011 numbers, too. Give you a good idea of the size, it is the biggest installation in Massachusetts. All the red outline you see there are the other bases that I just mentioned, and you can fit them all in Joint Base Cape Cod. And mostly, the north is just all training area and reserve, if you're not familiar with it. So the other bases are relatively small, but essentially, Joint Base Cape Cod is very large, 22,000 acres whole.
We have a question.
No, I don't have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, it's 405 million.
400, what did I say, 405,000?
Thousand. We want everyone to know what a great impact you have on Cape Cod.
I give a take a zero.
Are you proposing here with the last slide, that all of those bases just move to...
No, there's no proposal whatsoever.
I think it's a great idea, personally.
My position doesn't allow me to do that.
You get the $14 billion of economic impact?
You'd have a lot of people living around here, too. Apologize for bullet number four, it's not MMR, it's Joint Base Cape Cod. Joint Base Cape Cod's structure right now is an executive director, it's not a command function, it's overall one-star general position that overs, kind of has an oversight, facilitates with the commanders, and provides some overwatch. Working on joint installation partnerships, joint oversight group, inter-agency cooperation, and what we're doing right now is working on what exactly Joint Base Cape Cod means, and how we bring that vision to Joint Base Cape Cod. Okay, so moving on to Camp Edwards, this slide is about, a little bit old, so some of the data might be out of date, but it gives you a general idea. This is Camp Edwards, is the Army side, all right? As I mentioned earlier, there's four command groups on Joint Base Cape Cod. What we primarily do is we train. We train soldiers. For the last several years, it's been pre-mobilization training. We have deployed multiple, multiple units within Massachusetts, and Camp Edwards has been a primary training facility for that, with the exceptions of weapons qualification. Gives you an idea of some of what we do, military law enforcement. We had an effort to make a regional training institute a few years ago, that's why I said the slide's a little bit old, that has fallen through, that will not happen. And we have a very large aviation support facility capability here as well, and you'll probably see the helicopters flying around here. 15,000 acres of contolment, and over 900,000 square feet of building space, large amount of network, road networks. We used to do a lot of mounted operations on Camp Edwards, you don't see much of that anymore. And the annual operating budget is 9.9 million, not 900,000. We have some future capital improvements that I'll talk about in a minute, and throughput means how many training days soldiers we put through. So in FY '13, we put about 184,000 training days of soldiers. These aren't all just Massachusetts soldiers. Because of the size, you can see, we get a lot of New England in either east coast units that come up here as well.
Ms. Moffett, you had a question?
Yes, if you would tell me what contolment area...
Contolment is primarily where the buildings, facilities, housing...
Military word.
It's this whole area now?
Yeah.
This is the contolment area. That's the...
That's the training area.
Training area.
So contolment is everybody who lives and shops and does whatever. The non-contolment area is the training area. Yes, I apologize.
Another question?
Question on training. Does Joint Base Cape Cod do more training than some of the other bases in the state? Or is it pretty equally divided?
Soldier training, I would say, for Army soldier training, the answer would be yes, with the exception of Devens that has more ranges. So to qualify in the weapon system specifically, you'd probably go to Devens, but for everything else within the Army, it would be primarily done here at Camp Edwards. What occurs when you do your pre-deployment is you check the block on some of those critical pre-deployment issues, items, here, and then you go to another deployment station like Fort Hood or something else and do some other items. But this is primarily a pre-deployment station. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so what I'm going to talk about relatively quickly here is the strategy that the Army has. I don't speak for the Coast Guard or the Air Force, and what some of the bullets we're looking at here, so our premier training facilities, range operations is a priority for us. That's the one capability gap we have right now. I'm not talking about large artillery guns, I'm just talking about primarily the rifle system, the small arms capability to qualify X amount of soldiers in a weekend. What we are trying to do is reduce our facility footprint and increase our facilities in terms of efficiencies and green and things like that. And we'll look at projected future utilization. Since 9/11, primarily units coming through Camp Edwards are deploying units, and you would think that the usage would be really high. What's going to occur, I think, over the next several years is more utilization because of our drawdown in Iraq and Afghanistan and the increased budget cuts. At the Military Department Defense Department, you will see more soldiers here because of its location. So, and I say that to you as a local community, that there will be an increase in utilization from the Army side, I predict, over the next five to 10 years. from the Army side, I predict, over the next five to 10 years. We're looking at an increase for physical security capability because of that, and obviously, the posture that the current country holds with regards to operate OPSEC and physical security, and supporting public safety, and natural resources and control burns. Next slide, please. So, like I said, we have a... What the Army side has not had recently is an updated strategy. Where do we want to be in 10 years? So, what we're looking at is developing partnerships with other federal agencies. We do a lot with other federal agencies right now, we want to increase that. Non-governmental organizations, building partnerships with some academia and things like that. And local communities as well, such as we're doing right now. But our primary mission is to train soldiers on Camp Edwards. One of the events we have coming up, when we talk about partnerships down the bottom, I highlighted, is we have what we call Regional Cooperation, RC14. That's coming up in late July, August. This is a partnership with Central Command down in Florida. And what this is, a multinational exercise where other countries come in. Just leadership, it's not weapons or anything like that, it's leadership. And we train and work with them on military decision-making process, how to develop operation orders, more tactical and strategic planning. And that exercise is going to take place at the end of July for about two weeks. And that's a pretty big deal for us. That's usually done overseas in other countries, like Kazakhstan and Kyrgyzstan and other countries like that. But it's being done at Camp Edwards this year. Next slide, please. Okay, range operations, I mentioned earlier, priority for us. We want to get to the point where we can qualify essentially battalion, which is anywhere from 300 to 400, 300 to 500 soldiers in one vehicle on their primary weapon systems. The focus in an air term is our pistol range that we're looking at getting up and running in that 2014 and '15. Next slide, please. Facility footprint, I mentioned, we do want to reduce our facility footprint. Buildings that we have on Camp Edwards are extremely old and inefficient, they cost a lot of money to manage. So, with significant, significant cuts in the Department of Defense budget, we just don't have the money anymore to maintain what we have. And we're actually closing some of the buildings down, probably reducing our footprint. And we're looking in the out years to put better buildings up if we can, and get rid of that carbon footprint as well. We do have a couple new facilities coming in this year. We're breaking ground in a couple weeks on a, what's called a UTE, which is a maintenance facility. And next year, we'll be looking at our RTI, which is a regional training facility, where we'll get a new, brand-new building for that as well.
Real quick, if you could just remember the microphone, because every time you turn towards the audience...
I apologize.
The folks at home may not be able to hear you, that's all.
Okay, all right. I do want to talk about safety and security, and this probably is important for the folks at home to hear. When we talk about security, we talk obviously about physical security within the base, and ensuring that the right people are on the base, like every other military base we have in the United States. But we also think in terms of, you know, protecting the community. Because there are certain things on the base that we don't want people to be injured, injured by. Some of these are UXOs, unexploited ordinances. And these are past UXOs from when the base used to shoot artillery rounds and mortar rounds and things like that. We're in a significant cleanup process right now that's been going on for many years. I think the government or the Army has spent, Mark, correct me, almost over $2... Over $1 billion so far, cleanup of Camp Edwards primarily. Part of that big cleanup is our impact area where all these rounds go. So, it costs a lot of money to put a fence line up, and there's an old rule that you don't put an obstacle out if you can't watch it 24/7. When you put fences up, people tend to go over them, through them, which we currently have on some of our fence areas. So, we're really trying to get the word out and put more additional signs up. And it really is for the community. There's really no security or classified information out there, it's just safely... Simply for folks' safety. And you can see, if you can't see, right here, this is a picture of a motorcycle track or an ATV track? Dirt bike, that's essentially six inches from an unexploited ordinance. All right, so this would have been a very sad story. And they're out there, from Devens and other organizations within Massachusetts, of kids and other folks that have been hurt because of things like this. You can see down on the right there, there's two ATVs coming onto Camp Edwards, very close to the restricted area. The ATV in the front is a little child. All right, so, we are working hard with the communities, the local police, and other organizations, try to mitigate this. And we're looking for folks' support as well, to get the word out. It's just not a safe place to be. I mean, there's a lot of room to maneuver out there, I'm sure it's fun. But like I said, another foot to the left, and that would have been a 911 call. Natural resources, we have controlled burns. You've probably seen it before, when you've been out here or smelled it. Sometimes the cloud cover doesn't do what we expect it to do, so the smoke stays below where it needs to be. We will be doing more prescribed burns as we go forward next year. We're looking to burn about 1,000 acres in 2014. And we... Part of our standard operating procedure is to ensure we inform the local communities when we're doing this. So, that's all I have for the Army side. If there's any questions, yes, ma'am?
Yes, one more question. I wonder if there are any future plans in place for use of the contolment area, other than military use?
We are working with... This is where kind of the JBCC executive director comes in. We're working with mass development. And mass development works closely with all the commanders here. And we are working with the Cape Cod Advisory Council as well. And we look for any opportunities that we can merge both the communities and mass development and the base, to see if we can have some shared usage capability. So, the answer... I guess the answer is yes, we are looking at it. Right now, we don't have anything within the contolment area that we're looking at specifically, I don't think. Are we, fellas?
I got a few things I'll touch on.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
But the answer is yes. Yes, sir?
And maybe you're not the right guy, or maybe I'll hold for the end. But the second round of the BRAC was announced a few years ago.
Right.
Where is that? And do... I know that we try to mobilize and be as...
Right.
Politically active as we possibly could, but maybe you can let us know where that stands right now.
Yeah, it really doesn't stand anywhere in terms of here. And I can tell you, there's a lot of misnomers about the BRAC. We hear there is... People say there's a BRAC. But if you talk to folks down in DC right now, there is no BRAC effort in place. So, we hear a lot of things about the BRAC, but nothing with significant fidelity. And as far as I know, there's no issues with regards to the BRAC right here. In terms of base closure. There are certainly budget issues that are impacting end strength, manpower strength, things like that, that I think Flav will probably talk to, but base closure-wise, nothing.
Agreed, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant Colonel Walt Jackham. I'm commander of the 6th Base Warning Squadron, and also the commander of Cape Cod Air Force Station. This is my second year of command, my second and last. So, this is only a two-year deal for me, and it's several years too short. I've really enjoyed my time here. I have basically three points to make tonight. The first one was just to give you a statement of the mission. We're the farthest base away from Falmouth, and also the smallest. So, we want to come out and explain what we do, of course. The second one is just to describe recent changes and upcoming changes that we have over the last year and in the upcoming year. And then finally, just to say thank you, to actually see the community members that we work with every day and that support us, and to look them in the eyes, and just be grateful for all the support that we get from the town of Falmouth. So, first of all, as far as our mission, we are North America's only east coast early warning radar. We're the only radar that's capable of detecting submarine-launched ballistic missiles. And while the Cold War is over, and we don't see a new Cold War anytime soon, those threats have not gone away. And with the events that are going on in Crimea and throughout Eastern Europe right now, we see that although the larger Soviet-US tensions have gone away, the idea of security still remains very important, especially as we have new nations such as Iran and other players developing new missile technologies, rocket technologies, and nuclear technologies. We used to have a secondary radar down in Robbins Air Force Base in Georgia, they are now closed. So, we are it, we are the only ones that are watching the Atlantic, and we're doing it right here from Cape Cod. Our secondary mission is becoming even more increasingly important, and that's satellite tracking. In fact, we spend the vast majority of our time actually looking for spacecraft. There's now only over 22,000 spacecraft in orbit. And as you can see from the bottom slide, every year, we make 1.5 million observations of satellites going overhead. That information is actually sent back to the Joint Space Operations Center at Vandenberg Air Force Base in California. And it's used to make a universal catalog that we share with every international partner that we have. And it's used for everything from understanding where things are in space, to understanding when things are burning into the atmosphere, to actually helping deconfliction with manned missions such as the International Space Station, or the cosmonauts, or even the Chinese taikonauts that were up recently as well. So, we can fly their orbits out, understand if there's a danger to their programs, and we will share that information. As far as the 6th Base Warning Squadron goes, we're a binational squadron. We have members of both the United States and Canada there. And that all goes into the idea of North American Aerospace Defense, or NORAD. All of our missile lines go back to Cheyenne Mountain Air Force Station in Colorado Springs, Colorado. And then those decisions and the information that we send tie back into the national decision-making structure. As soon as we report on something, it immediately goes back to the commander of US Northern Command. It goes back to the commander of US of NORAD. And then they will call literally the Secretary of Defense to give the Secretary of Defense an assessment. And based on the assessment, they will call the President of the United States for some sort of decision, whether or not that is whether or not we are under attack, and whether or not there should be a response, up to and including a nuclear response. So, the information that is coming from our site is critically important to national security. We have 135 military, civilian, and contractor members. That really isn't a lot considering the fact that we do 24/7 operations, and considering the fact that we do the very breadth of work that we do up there. Everything from radar operations, to radar maintenance, to communication systems, to defense, to security, to civil engineering, to power, and everything else that goes along with it, to operating installation. And our motto is "Ever Aware." We've been operating 24/7, 365 days a year since 1980. All right, next slide, please. This is what we've been up to for the last year. And of course, we've got these great pictures here as well. The top left was when Air Force One came in, we provided some security detail for that to help protect the plane. And the one below that is our community service at Fenway Park, which is tremendous to actually be able to be in that storied park and watch the World Champions Red Sox play. It was great. I get real excited about this place. Current projects, we finished the nine and a half million dollar wind turbine installation. I hesitated to bring that up here, because the last time I was here, a very fine member and gracious member of the community offered me your wind turbines without asking you first. But unfortunately, we had to decline because we'd already purchased ours. But they are working very, very well. We did complete that project this year. They are operational. They're going to reduce our energy uses by up to 50%, which is pretty important for a radar of our size. And it's clean renewable energy that we're providing to Cape Cod, into the Cape Cod grid. We have a 6.4 million dollar construction program. The $2 million water chiller replacement program we put in puts a more efficient refrigerant in place. We actually use the great outdoors. Instead of using refrigerant, we pump the water outside in the cold weather. It cools down the water, and then we don't have to expend the energy on refrigerant. And then we have a $4.1 million operating budget as well. A lot of this goes back into the local towns, including Falmouth, to support the local community. And finally, I just wanted to address the community services and partnerships. We have a great relationship with the town of Falmouth. Probably the most visible for us is the connections we have with Cape Cod Air Force Station and their MWR program. Falmouth very graciously offers us some beach passes every year. And that allows our airman to go out and enjoy the just really wonderful Falmouth beaches that you have, that they would not otherwise be able to access or afford otherwise. I am a proud finisher of the Falmouth Road Race. I got my 41st Annual Cup. I'm really hoping that the movers don't break it, because I'm very proud of it. But I did win the lottery, and I was able to participate this year. And we also volunteer as well, so we appreciate the local community getting us into those sorts of events. As far as support goes, so a lot of support comes from farther north, like Born and Sandwich. But we still have great connections with Massachusetts State Police and the Falmouth Police as well, gaining intelligence about criminal activity in the area and making sure that everyone can be safe. And then finally, just support from charitable organizations, clubs, and businesses. There are so many wonderful businesses here that provide military discounts, and that will donate to booster clubs and provide support to the military personnel. We have a lot of girls from Falmouth that are in the local Girl Scout troop. We receive spiritual counseling from a lot of the local churches and other spiritual centers here in Falmouth. The Golf Club of Cape Cod has been very generous, bringing us out sometimes and giving us golf lessons, which haven't helped me, but I think have helped other people. Ballymead holds an Easter egg hunt. And this is just a huge laundry list of all the wonderful things that the town of Falmouth does for 6th Base Warning Squadron, Cape Cod Air Force Station, and the military community. So, I could go on, but instead of doing that, I just wanted to say thank you very much for all the tremendous support that we get from Falmouth. And it's been really a pleasure being here for the last two years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to the board. Thank you for having me. I'm Captain Steve Torpey, I'm the commanding officer of Air Station Cape Cod. And I have been here just about seven or eight months. I got here in the early summer, but went away for two months to learn how to fly helicopters again, finally got back in late August, and finally getting my feet wet here. Thought I'd discuss a little bit about what we're doing operationally at the air station, and then talk a little bit later on about how things are changing in the support side of the air station. So, operationally, we've been pretty consistent over time. We still do search and rescue for all of the New England area, from the Canadian coastline, where it intersects with Maine, all the way down to basically the border of New York, New Jersey area. So, that... All that area is still ours to patrol. Living Marine Resources Fisheries Patrols is another mission that we spend a lot of time doing, as well as AIDS navigation and ports, waterways, and coastal security. So, those missions have been largely consistent over time and haven't changed. What has changed is that white airplane over there you see. That used to be a... That mission used to be run by the HU-25 Falcon jet. We have learned over time that jets don't work very well at 1,000 feet and below, so we got a propeller-driven aircraft, which offers a heck of a lot more time on scene. So, we get close to eight to nine hours of airtime out of that airplane as opposed to three and a half to four hours out of the jet. Although you get there fast, you look great. This plane works much better for our world of work. It also carries a sensor pallet that is a marvelous ability to provide persistence offshore, to look at fishing vessels, and to search for people with the latest technology that the Falcon simply didn't have. So, we also have... We have three of those aircraft, we have four H60s, which haven't changed over time, except their interior has been revamped to give us the, basically, the... A 9... Well, I would say a 2010 state-of-the-market cockpit, which has been wonderful. Our 4,900 combined flight hours, that's pretty much a measure of our activity level over time. That hasn't changed, we usually run about 5,000 hours. The sequestration and along... As well as a couple of other budgetary aspects, dropped it down to a few hours. But I expect those to remain largely consistent around 5,000 hours. So, nothing's really changed in that respect. 207 SAR cases, we've saved 28 lives last year and saved... And assisted 55 others. Of note, the fishing vessel Anna Marie, I don't know... Anna Mary, sorry. I don't know if you heard about that case, it was a really kind of a marvelous case off of Nantucket, where a fishing vessel master fell overboard in the middle of the night. He was basically treading water for 12 hours when we found him. He was incredibly lucky. And needle and haystack, no one on board knew he had fallen overboard for about... About six hours. So, the boat steamed unpiloted for six hours. Didn't hit anything, but we had to basically retrace its path to figure out where that person was. And if you've been watching the difficulties in finding that aircraft down in the Indian Ocean, well, similar circumstance here, we... Six hours have passed, and we... We, six hours have passed, and we did find that man, and he is reunited with his family. Next slide, please. All right, so this is where the changes could occur this summer. Shouldn't see any external changes for the public, but Air Station Cape Cod really is two units. The air station unit that runs the helicopters and the airplanes and the airfield, which I will remain commanding officer of, but the base side or the support side of the air station, which runs the 350 houses, the Child Development Center, the second, the third busiest clinic in the Coast Guard, the hotel, a golf course, a swimming pool, a bowling alley, the largest movie theater in the Cape, as well as a number of other things. That is all part of the support side of the Coast Guard Air Station, which is going to be split and be run by another commanding officer similar to me, but who's been brought up with a support background. I'm a good air station CO. I'm not such a good housing maintenance guy, so they're going to get a housing maintenance guy that knows how to run the housing at Air Station Cape Cod. So, that's going to take place this summer. I think it's going to be nothing but a positive for the unit. It'll add another O-6 to our group, but in my mind, I think it's a step in the right direction. This will be the 14th base the Coast Guard stands up, so the 13 others all have been very successful. I don't see any issues with us splitting the two, splitting our unit in half, other than the fact that I'm going to be very sad to see a lot of that go because I've grown very attached to it. And I guess I'll leave it at that unless there are any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll leave the slide flipper on here once I, anyway, at the end, you guys would appreciate me going a little quickly on this. I'm Jim Lefever. I'm the commander of the 102nd Intelligence Wing. Took over the end of last October. However, I have been at the base for 14 years, so I got a little bit of history there. It's been kind of a busy year, 2013, good and bad. Couple of the, couple of the good things that happened to us start with upper left. We did host the F-15s from the 104th Fighter Wing, our old jets. We hosted them for about six months while their runway got repaired over at Westfield. That was kind of fun, and kind of not. And then, upper center, you'll see a picture of some of our domestic operations, which that was during the winter storm Nemo of last winter, when we had NSTAR preposition hundreds of vehicles actually out on the Army ramp, so it really was a joint effort. They positioned all their vehicles out there, and then between the Army and the air, we housed them in our dormitories. And so, we kind of set the standard for another big event like that, and NSTAR knows where to go to help us get everyone back on, up on power again. Then, of course, the other two pictures on the right-hand side, we had security forces and combat communicators in the city of Boston for the marathon, because we always do that, and it was very apropos that they were there during the events of the bombing too, because we could take over and do some domestic operations. And we're doing it again this year, and hopefully it will go nice and smoothly, and nothing will happen. Military construction's been ongoing. We've got two new facilities. However, they've been running into quite a few difficulties. This building right here, I do believe, was built by the same one as your Falmouth High School. So, we're running into problems and trying to work our way through that.
Good luck.
So, the intel wing, changes going on right now. The intelligence group is moving into this facility. Once they move into that facility, it will end the six-year transition process ever since 2008 when we converted. So, it's been a long, long time, and we're not, this building is 99%, but it's been like that for over a year, and we're hoping that we'll be able to move in for this summer to become fully operational with all the equipment sometime next summer. We did gain a unit, the 212th Engineering and Installation Unit. They were stationed at Milford, Massachusetts, where our old Joint Force headquarters was. Subsequently, they had built a brand-new building, Army and Air Guard on Hanscom Air Force Base. So, they moved, our headquarters is Milford, but this 100-person unit had nowhere to go. We said, "We've got the room down at the 102nd, so come on down here." So, we plussed up a little bit. They're a great unit to have because they do engineering, and they do a lot of installation. Right now, they're pulling fiber optics to this building for us right now. Couple of transitions going on too. Ever since the budget of FY12 came out, where our air operations group was targeted for cut, and then the Council of Governors, and there was a big pushback, and eventually we got a stay of cutting for a while, but we knew ever since then that once cut, they're going to come back after us. So, we have been pushing with the National Guard Bureau ever since to, if you are going to cut our group, don't cut us. We're a great place. Why don't you give us a new mission? And we feel we have been pretty successful with that, although it's not down on paper yet. We have two missions that have been cut, the 267th Combat Comm Group and the 102nd Air Operations Group, both cut effectively, effective the end of FY15, beginning of '16. However, we do have a handshake promise from our three-star general in charge of National Guard Bureau that says he will reroll them into a new cyber mission. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed. It's very, it's very good news if it all happens as planned, and then we'll have a sunrise mission going on at the base. We'll have intelligence, regular intelligence like we're doing right now. We will also have intelligence in the cyber domain, so we'll really be intelligent. Future projects, we are constantly, the vision of our adjutant general, General Rice, is to, he says, "Open the doors on getting partnerships on the base," because we know it's always at risk. It's a big base, it's expensive. You've heard, you know, the Army side with their cuts. We're obviously looking at for cuts all the time, so if we can get more partners on the base and make us a bigger, better place, maybe that can help us. Okay? So, we've kind of opened up the doors as much as we possibly can to bring partners on base to help us out. You mentioned, is there any, anything in the Contaminant Area that's going on? Nothing that's solidified, but there's been lots of studies going on. Massachusetts Mass Development with the Military Task Force Strategy Group from Governor's Office have been looking at ways, what can we put in there? Privatization of housing, the Coast Guard housing is something that's being looked at, but there's, you know, it's a difficult challenge. The 102nd Intel Wing still owns and operates all the utilities, and we're not a utility, we're not the utility business. We want to get rid of that. Water, wastewater, electricity, we're constantly looking at ways to possibly privatize those. However, there's also challenges with that too, because we are a military base, it's kind of tough to put a civilian entity right in the middle of our, you know, base because of security and access reasons. Not impossible, but we're looking at it. We are, we are going forth on a lot of green energy projects, obviously. If we can cut down our electricity bill, we're looking a lot less expensive, not only wind, but we're looking at a large solar plant that's going to go on our landfill. Sometime next year, I do believe they'll be starting to actually install, it's a private company coming on to install on that. We're also looking at energy storage testing that's going on at base, very efficient batteries that could hook up to green energy that aren't persistent like wind and solar. Once they test that, maybe it'll grow into something else. So, that's just a couple of things that are in the works as far as the testing of it, but we are working at it. One question came up was, what about the next BRAC? There's nothing, nothing official yet. There's rumors 2017, you know, we'll see, but you don't need a BRAC to get hurt, you know? BRAC is to close or realign bases. That hasn't happened yet, but we know that obviously with our cuts right here, they can do a lot just programmatically cutting units, and that's what we're dealing with right now. And so, you know, ever since 2005, when the old BRAC came out, that's what we've been looking at whenever possible of how to avoid those cuts and be cheaper. And with that, I will end it, and see if you have any questions either for myself or for the group in general.
I have another. I missed the last M3 Cubed meeting, and I know that you've been working with the Cape Cod Commission in the J-Loos, the Joint Land Use, and I wonder, where is that now, that plan? Is it complete?
The J-Loos, I do believe it was finished.
It's finished now.
That's what I had heard. Now, the, my counterpart working in the Executive Director's Office, Virginia Doonan, she has more information on that. She couldn't be here tonight, but I think last time I heard that that was going to be finished.
It is finished.
I just don't know where it is in the distro process.
I thought maybe that that plan might be sort of a jumping off point for some future programs or plans or use in the Contaminant Area or, or community partnerships, that type. I think I know that's something that you were looking at a lot.
It addresses a lot of things that I have mentioned, but again, they're just at the postulating stage right now. We have nothing in agreement, but we're working that way. It's a, it's a complex process to make that happen, but it's not like we're dragging our feet, it's just tough.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience have any questions?
May I sit here and simply ask, what is WWTP after energy?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
The question is, so the folks at home can hear again, because without the microphone. So, the question was, what is the WWTP on the slide and is wastewater treatment plant?
So, he supposedly answered my question, is energy storage slash wastewater treatment plant? How do those two relate together, tie together, or is that just?
No, they don't necessarily tie together.
I'm interested.
We have, we have a wastewater treatment plant that, that does the whole gamut from dirty water to, to letting it go back in the environment all clean. It's a, we have excess capacity, the base, we don't generate enough usage for it, so that was one postulated utility that we might be able to privatize, and it's still out there. It's just, we're just realizing that is a difficult process, because it's not just the wastewater treatment plant. I know Falmouth has one too, but it's, it's the water that goes with it too. So, all the pipes that supply our water distribution system is all manned by the same people that do the wastewater treatment plant. So, if we were to ever get rid of one, we'd have to get rid of both of them, and that's the thing that's posed, it's a, it's a real challenge, because it's less attractive to take on that whole, that whole thing together. Does that make sense?
I have one more question. Falmouth is also looking at putting a solar array on the landfill. Do you happen to remember when your landfill was kept? Yeah, I know that's.
It was more than 14 years ago.
Oh, okay. That's very helpful. Thank you.
No, 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 I think, I think it was, it was, you know, the, the U.S. Air Force owned it in the 50s and 60s, and I'm thinking it was around that time.
Okay. So, it was really ready to be approved for some other project?
That's the only, that's really the only thing we could figure out what can be put on it, because you can't really build on it, and it's, it's flat, and there's no trees or anything on it, and when we figured what, how can we use this? It's big, it's about 30 acres or more.
Wow.
What can we put on there? Well, we can put some solar panels, and it seems like it's going to work.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda, we have Historical Commission to present proposed changes to the bylaw. I know there's some disagreement here between the Planning Board and the Historical Commission.
I'm curious if the [inaudible 00:07:19] or if you would pass it down, there are excellent, and if you would pass this down, please. I'm sorry, for the lack of time here.
And just for some background, there is an article on the town meeting warrant to change, it's Article 1 in the special town meeting, to change some of the language in the demolition delay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Putnam and Selectman.
Nancy, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Thank you. I am Nancy Hayward. I'm a town meeting member from Division 5, and I am the Vice Chairman of the Falmouth Historical Commission. At our 19th of March Historical Commission meeting, the chairman told me that I was to appear before the Selectman. At that time, I had not received my warrant book, and I was shocked by the explanation in the warrant book that recommendation of the Selectman was indefinite postponement, and that was because the Planning Board recommended amended language, which was not All right. On the 20th of November, Heidi Walts had the Historical Commission meeting, had handed out a paragraph from Brian Curry with the heading, Section 107-4 Waiver of Delay. I didn't totally ignore that, I certainly had seen it, but I did not, I did not understand that I, as the Vice Chairman of the Historical Commission, who is the person that sort of rewrote the demolition delay bylaw, as I say, had sort of ignored it, and so I'm quite taken aback that the reason you didn't accept the change in the bylaw was that it didn't follow Mr. Curry's paragraph. What I handed out to you was a copy of Mr. Curry's paragraph, and the other sheets are sort of my redone today, which is like last minute, although if you rewrite something, you can hand it to the, oh, the Chairman of Town Meeting for editing an article. There are certainly of the sheet, the page in the warrant where Article 1, the Chapter 107 of the demolition in the Code of Falmouth has some things which I would have changed a little bit. So, I'm a little confused about what, what, I didn't understand that, I thought you, I thought I was coming here so that you can ask me questions, but the agenda says that the Historical Commission presents proposed changes to the bylaw.
Well, we have before us the, the changes, I think here from the Planning Board, and then there's your handwritten changes, which?
I, I had at the 18th of December Historical Commission meeting, I had handed out a line by line writing of the demolition delay bylaw, which you don't have, I don't have a copy of it here, had gone through it line by line and made changes. On, do you, do you have the article from the warrant book?
Yes.
Yes.
So, under Advisory Review, I, I had added Advisory Review under definitions. That looks fairly clear, 107-2 definitions. This is, is sort of a contracted version of what I had actually given out to the Historical Commission, because I had written the whole bylaw line by line.
Are these, though, the only relevant changes?
I would, yes.
Okay.
Except for instance, under 107-3 procedure, under B, that should read, the fourth line, one, two, the third line, the the third line, the last word should not be "application," it should be "applicant."
Mr. Murphy?
And when you continue on.
We have some questions from the board, actually.
Can I stop?
Yes.
Nancy, we're trying to rewrite this at this point in time. With all due respect, you're a student at town meeting. If you're losing me here tonight, the odds are that we're going to lose a lot of people at town meeting. And very often, we mention that we have to take two bites of the apple. I don't think this is ready for town meeting. You haven't got the Planning Board's support the way the language is written. But I'm just throwing it out there. I don't want to see you destined for failure because sometimes if something implodes too early, it totally implodes. I'd rather have everybody buy into it. You say you're confused, now I'm confused, and you're the one writing it. So, I'm going to turn it back to you and ask you how to make me not so confused.
Well, if I may, Nancy, I think one thing that is confusing is the, first of all, this community has very strong feelings about its historic structures. I mean, you know that. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. The original demolition delay bylaw came about, and it was because of, it came about not because of Highfield. Highfield benefited from it, but it was a three-month delay. That's all the time it placed on a developer or an applicant was three months. Then somewhere along the line, it got changed to six months. And six months is a really long time. So, now, instead of taking it back to three months, now you're trying to put in language for a waiver. And that really complicates it. I think, from my way of thinking, it would function a lot better if it had just stayed at three months. And then whoever needed, whoever had the structure and wanted to apply, the process had to be, had to be carried out and handled in a very professional way, but in, within that timeframe. And it did get done. So, I think that's the problem, is that it's gone to six months, and now because that's too long, no one wants to wait six months, so now they want a waiver. I think having a waiver is not a good idea because you're really making a determination, you should only have to make one determination, and that's within that three-month delay period. But not two determinations because now you have to turn around, decide if you grant a waiver, and then why, and then what happens. I just think it's too confusing. And I agree with Kevin. I think you're better to let it go, this town meeting, and think about it some more, have some more public meetings, and bring it back at another time.
Actually, if I could jump in, I think some clarification is in order because I believe, and perhaps Mr. Donald can help out because I think he was one of the initiators of this discussion, that I think this is not about, there's already a waiver available. It's a question of how the waiver is advertised. And that was one of the issues, was that, and I think the reason why we're seeing these suggested changes is that waivers have been granted, but folks have not known that the waivers are being granted. And so, what the suggested language and where the differences are here between what the Historical Commission is suggesting and what the Planning Board has offered, is how those, how the discussion surrounding the waiver is advertised. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I really feel, since the public is listening to this, that I would like to say that the current demolition delay bylaw was adopted at Fall Town Meeting in 2006. I was on the Historical Commission and helped write that. It was approved by the Attorney General in Spring of 2007, and it took effect in January 2008. So, this six-month demolition delay bylaw has been on the books since January 2008. And it has had the option of a waiver. And Mr. Putnam is correct that the main defect that was being changed was to change the, to change the noticing of the, notice to the public about the meeting. Now, go back, if you have your article, and this is what the town meeting members are going to have, is this article on Article 1 on the special town meeting. Under 107-3 procedure, under, I'm going to call it section or B. If you read through that, and the first sentence says, insert the word advisory after the word "for" and before the word "review" on line 5, line 1 and 5. Since the whole article is not, I never thought that this is how this would be presented to the public. And then it says, insert the following language at the end of the paragraph. Upon the receipt of the letter of certification, the Commission shall notify a butters by mail and publish the intent of the applicant to demolish the structure. The public will be advised to monitor the FHC agendas for the scheduled hearings on the demolition application. That's where, when I rewrote the demolition delay bylaw, and that wording was accepted at, was discussed at the 18th of December Historical Commission meeting, that's where I put that in. That's not where Mr. Curry had wanted to put in. So, I, when I saw that you hadn't accepted it because we hadn't, because, I will say "I" because I wrote it. I didn't, I, I'm shocked to find that the reason you turned it down is not because of what is here on the warrant, but because I didn't follow what Mr. Curry had said.
Ms. Hayward, could we ask, because I'm hearing some voices from the board, and Mr. Murphy had mentioned being confused. And I think it might be worthwhile for you or some other member of the Historical Commission to sit down with the Planning Board to try to resolve the differences in the language. And I think that's where the board is concerned. We didn't want to put a recommendation on something where there were going to be conflicting recommendations or conflicting stories coming into town meeting where the Planning Board had one idea of how this article should look, and you folks have presented a different point of view. Would rather come into town meeting with a unified voice. And if you could work with the Planning Board to try to resolve the differences and come up with something that both the Planning Board and the Historical Commission can agree upon, then it'll make it easier for this board to provide a positive recommendation. If that can't be done before town meeting, then that's fine. We can come back in the fall and try this again. Because it wouldn't be the first time, obviously, that we've had to do that sort of situation with any sort of an article. Do you think you could go back to the Historical Commission and try to work with the Planning Board and come up with something?
I think that, I think there is, there's, that you and I have a different idea about the autonomy of the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission is created by a state law. We currently do not have any administrative help. The Planning Board has been giving us some administrative help. I, I believe that Historical Commission is expecting this article to go to town meeting. I believe that I will not try to present to town meeting the two-sheet, Section 107-4 Waiver of Delay, which I rewrote. I believe that I will speak at town meeting from the floor to what has been printed in the warrant book.
Okay. Understand, though, that there may be some dissension from the Planning Office and maybe even from this board because there's some disagreement there?
I understand that it will be going without the blessing of the Board of Selectmen. I don't believe that this is the appropriate time to discuss this further. I certainly think that there is material for discussion here. So, I appreciate you giving me the time. I will say that I didn't fully understand, when I accepted this assignment, what was expected of me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hayward. And does the board want to take any action at this time?
All right. I do think it's going to be very helpful at town meeting if we discuss this, that either we make available the two pages of the current bylaw, or at least recommend all town meeting members, that without it, the article makes no sense. And I think that's one of the things Mrs. Hayward was saying, is that her expectation may have been that the article would have it within it. But without having reference to what the current is and what's being proposed and compare the two, it's very hard to understand what's going on.
Yes. I will do the best I can to see that the actual demolition delay bylaw is available, at least in all the, all the precincts. However, I will say that every sheet of paper that I have produced has been produced out of my own pocketbook. And I think, as far as I know, getting that produced for the different precincts will also be out of my pocketbook. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Hayward, because this is town business, you could certainly come into Town Hall and ask that copies be made for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Putnam.
You're welcome. All right. Next item on our agenda, we have a report from the Cape Cod Commission, the Falmouth Representative, Mr. Putnam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen. Just to introduce myself, I know you all know me, for the people at home and those in the audience, my name is Andrew Putnam. I am Falmouth Representative to the Cape Cod Commission and the Commission's elected Secretary, at least for the next month. We'll see what happens, so. I'm here before you today, of course, to give you an update, as I do every so often here. I know last year I gave about three before this board. I'm hoping to do another three this year, just to keep you informed as to what the happenings are at the Commission currently, how that affects the town of Falmouth, and what we're doing as we move forward into the next fiscal year on the Cape Cod Commission. First thing, of course, I want to start out with is that there has been a lot of misinformation thrown out as of late about the Commission. Many of you have probably seen that the Cape Cod Commission has somehow ended up on the warrant for about nine different towns in terms of Barnstable. I know they don't have a town meeting, so it's definitely landed on the desk of the town councilors, which I will be at their meeting as they have that public hearing this Thursday. So, just a couple of clarifying facts, of course, in terms of the misinformation that's been thrown out. One of the things, of course, that I've heard a lot about with the Commission as of late is that the Commission is full of bureaucrats, I didn't know I was one of them, that have been there forever, do nothing, and of course, cost the Cape a lot of money. Just in case you weren't aware, there's actually been a lot of turnover at the Commission. One of the things I definitely wanted to make sure you, the board, had in terms of information was that there's actually been a 75% of the Commissioner's voting membership turned over in the last eight years, 50% in the last four years, which you contributed to that about a year ago when you put me as your representative on the Commission. So, there has been a lot of turnover at the Commission, and those individuals who currently sit on the Commission, the vast majority of them, are relatively new. I do know that we were informed that we now have a new representative from the town of Chatham. So, as you can see, we've got some new blood in there, and that's going to help as we move forward with some of the pieces that I'll be talking to you about in a couple moments. Another thing, of course, that I wanted to make sure that you were aware of, in terms of the facts, as misinformation continues to be spread out there, is that the Cape Cod Commission does save the towns a lot of money. There are folks out there currently that are saying that the Commission is expensive, overbearing, that we cost the towns a lot of money, that we cost the taxpayers a lot of money. Sadly, that's just not true. The Commission doesn't cost as much as people think it does. Falmouth, as an annual, in our annual budget, we usually go over, comb it with a fine-toothed comb. Town Meeting loves to pick apart certain pieces of it. And we know that once we get to that last page, we see the budget for the year, and the town of Falmouth has a budget that exceeds $100 million. Commission does not have a budget anywhere close to that, not even comparing. We're talking about mountains and molehills here. In terms of the cost savings, the Commission has collected $9.4 million in mitigation funds to offset project impacts that towns would otherwise need to pay for, and that doesn't include the additional millions in developer-funded transportation, housing, and open space projects. A lot of individuals seem to think that when the Commission collects funds during our review of development of regional impacts, that those funds come to the Commission and stay with the Commission. That's just not true. In fact, those funds are received by the town in which that development is occurring. A lot of those funds are to mitigate problems that the development would otherwise create within those towns, whether it be traffic, whether it be issues with wastewater. Those funds go to the town in order to be utilized in mitigating that particular problem. So, for example, if there is going to be a large-scale project built, and it's going to cause a huge increase in traffic on a road that's already struggling, usually, in a case like that, if the development of regional impact is approved by the Cape Cod Commission, the Commission then, of course, would usually collect a certain amount of funds to mitigate that problem, which would be received by the town in order to improve the roadway in which that development is going on. And that helps, of course, the town not have to front its own money in order to be able to mitigate a problem that was created by a developer. So, just a couple of things. I could go on and on. The only other thing I'll mention in terms of one of the things that's thrown out there is people like to say that we're a big, giant regulatory agency, that all we want to do is create more regulations and stifle growth. The truth is, is actually our regulatory program represents less than 10% of our staff. We are mostly a planning agency, and we mostly assist towns in planning for their future and for the projects that they see that they need to work on at that moment in time. I know that you, the board, are very familiar with the Spring Bars Road Project, but the Commission has done a lot of work on in helping our Planning Board here in the town of Falmouth so that we can better figure out what to do with that parcel. The Commission has a lot of staff that are very well-trained, trained in areas that a lot of towns don't have, members of their planning departments that are trained in some of these areas in terms of land use, in terms of different traffic studies that can be done by these people who are just some of the greatest people I've ever met, some of the smartest people I've ever met, and with expertise that just far exceeds a lot of the individuals in the towns here on Cape Cod. And that's why they're there. They're there to assist the towns, and they're there to give that expertise to them, especially when we're lacking in certain areas. So, it's a nice, it's nice to know that we can pool from that pool of people and get their assistance and use their expertise when we're working on certain projects. So, that was one thing, of course, that I wanted to come before you tonight and just make sure that I explain, that there are a lot of facts being thrown out there that are not being accurately represented, I guess would be the best way to put it mildly. And, of course, make sure that you, the board, understood that. I did receive a, sort of a fact sheet that I wanted to give you, the board. I received it a little late today by email, so unfortunately, I was not able to print it. I will be sending it by email. I will be sending it by email in PDF form to the town manager and to your office. That way you can all receive that fact sheet, just so you have that. But one of the things, of course, with that fact sheet I do want to talk about is just a couple of other activities that the, that the Commission has been working on that Falmouth is going to be benefiting from. One of those, of course, is the Falmouth CWMP approval. We did approve the Falmouth CWMP after it came before us in terms of development of regional impact, so that is now moving forward. I know that we'll be seeing pieces of that at town meeting, and of course, I'm just glad it's over. I'm just glad we're moving on with that. So solving our wastewater problem is something, of course, the Commission has been diligently working on over the last couple of months, and it's very nice to see that Falmouth's coastal wastewater management plan is finally approved and moving ahead, so. The other thing, of course, that Falmouth will be benefiting from is that we are working on a regional GIS mapping flyover. This is huge benefit to the towns. It costs the towns an extraordinary amount of money in order to be able to do their own flyovers to update their GIS mapping systems. And for the Cape Cod Commission to do one flyover for the entirety of Cape Cod and then disseminate that information to each one of the 15 municipalities, it's going to be a huge cost savings to all the towns, and it's greatly beneficial because it means we're going to have a larger array of information at our fingertips, and we're going to be able to disseminate that information, like I said, to the towns so that they can more accurately use it in the future. Another thing, of course, is the Commission with affordable housing support through the Barnstable County Home Consortium, coordinated by the Commission's Affordable Housing Staff Specialists, made a conditional commitment of $105,000 in home funds to the Resource Incorporated to assist in the acquisition and rehabilitation of a foreclosed property at 20 Shore Street to create three affordable rental units, and a conditional commitment of $175,000 to the Falmouth Housing Corporation to assist in the redevelopment of its 11-unit, 100 percent affordable family rental project known as, I always get this name wrong, Notantico Woods in Woods Hole. So that's just another piece I wanted to bring before you, another bit of information. Also, of course, is the joint land use study. In the fall of 2013, the Commission completed a joint land use study for the Massachusetts Military Reservations/joint base Cape Cod and surrounding communities. So just a couple of initiatives that we've been doing as of late or have completed that have affected Falmouth in a very positive way. In terms of our regional initiatives, of course, you're very much aware that we're moving along in our 208 wastewater process here, updating the plan. We should be complete with that by June, so we're very excited as we move along. I do encourage anybody who wants to be part of that process to go to the Cape Cod Commission's website. You will be able to see the available dates that we have, the different meetings in the different areas on Cape Cod, so you'll be able to see where the meetings are that will affect Falmouth directly, where you can give input and see where the Commission is going with this. A lot of interesting information. It's a lot of information, just to put that out there. There's a lot of reading with it. I have only gotten through a fraction of what we've done so far, so it's quite impressive what our staff have put together in terms of our 208 wastewater update. So I do encourage anybody who hasn't gotten themselves involved in that process, or at least learned about the process, to go and just take a look, even just sit there and hear what's going on and see how we're moving forward, solving Cape Cod's wastewater problem as a region rather than just town by town, which is going to help us, of course, tremendously in saving money for towns, as we'll have a lot of information available to us, and we'll also know the best alternatives, where they're going to be used best. It's just a huge, huge, huge cost savings to the towns to be able to do this, so. I do encourage you to get involved if you haven't gotten involved already, or at least to go and see how it's moving along. Other thing, of course, was there was a Capewide Fertilizer District of Critical Planning Concern. It doesn't really affect Falmouth very much, as we already have our own fertilizer management bylaws, but for the rest of the Cape, it does give them away before the state comes down with their own regulations to create their own fertilizer management bylaws through a district of critical planning concern that the Commission did approve and the Assembly approved after. So not really affecting us very much, again, as we have our own bylaws. The other piece, of course, is our municipal solid waste negotiations. We are working currently with 14 Cape Communities and up to 14 off-Cape Communities. The Commission negotiated long-term municipal solid waste disposal contract terms, and the estimated combined potential savings from this work is $19 million over the life of the 10-year contracts. So just another regional initiative I know will be impacting Falmouth that we should be aware of. The other, of course, is e-permitting. I know that we've talked about that in the past. I know that Falmouth has talked about e-permitting in the past, and that's another piece that we're working on regionally. With about $500,000 from a 2012 Massachusetts Community Innovative Challenge Grant supplemented with more than $150,000 in technical assistance funds, the Regional Strategic Information Office, managed by the Cape Cod Commission, launched an e-permitting pilot in three towns and more scheduled to come online in the coming year. So something to look forward to. We'll definitely streamline the processes in a lot of towns for permitting, and I've myself always loved anything that involves technology, so anything that's got e in front of it, I'm all for. The last, of course, in terms of regional initiatives to bring to your attention is private well identification and mapping. Responding to the concerns about NSTAR's planned use of herbicides within powerline rights of way, the Commission mapped all public and private wells within proximity to utilities right of way using GPS coordinates. So something else that the Commission has been working on is a regional initiative. The only other piece for a regional initiative that I do want to speak about, something we haven't started yet, but we are going to be starting soon after the 208 wastewater update is completed in June, which is an update to the Regional Policy Plan. That is coming up soon as we reach our five-year deadline for that. I do want to make sure the members of the community are aware of the Regional Policy Plan. It impacts every community tremendously. It is the guiding document for towns, comprehensive. Such a long day, now I'm blanking on the name. Thank you. CWMP. CWMP? No. Help me out here, Mary Pat.
I'm trying to. So we just say it again, it's the...
Regional Policy Plan guides the...
The RPP, the update on the RPP.
And it guides the town's local comprehensive...
Well, a local comprehensive plan, which we don't have.
Which we don't have, yeah.
Right. But we should have. We don't have a certified local comprehensive plan, but that's, you know, a lot of towns are getting to that point because of the growth incentive areas, so, yeah.
Right. So that was something I do want to make sure the town is aware of and that we are all involved in. It will affect us in terms of how we update the Regional Policy Plan, so I do want to make sure that, and I will, of course, go to the Chamber of Commerce, make sure Falmouth Chamber is involved with it. I want to make sure members of the communities, members of the community are involved in it. It's going to be a huge process, just like the 208 update as we're doing now, and I do want Falmouth to have accurate representation in that process. The other piece, of course, regionally, that I do want to make sure we are quite aware of, of course, is that we did update Chapter H regulations at the Commission that was approved by the Assembly. Previously, with Chapter H regulations, the towns themselves could raise the thresholds for developments of regional impact above 10,000 feet, 10,000 square feet, if they had adopted a land use vision map. Falmouth has not adopted a land use vision map, in fact, a lot of towns have not. So what we did, of course, at the Commission, was we went to the Assembly, requested that it be updated, so the Commission itself, with the approval of the Assembly, could find those areas in which growth is occurring, in which economic development is increasing or would be viable, and increase the thresholds in those areas. A lot of people seem to think that the Commission loves doing developments of regional impact, that we love reviewing projects, large-scale projects, and approving or denying them. It is a lot of tedious work, I can tell you that. I was definitely forewarned before I came on to this over a year ago, that this would be a lot of work. And what we want to do, of course, is we want to give an incentive for businesses to grow and businesses develop in those areas where it's appropriate. So with this update, the process that we're looking at and we're going to start doing soon is to ensure that those areas in Cape, those areas in those towns where business development should be occurring or where it is currently occurring would have a higher threshold. That way, businesses could build larger buildings or do a little more without having to come to the Commission for approval, because that area's already been designated as an area in which business development should be occurring.
Mr. Chairman, I misspoke. It was not the local comprehensive plan. We have a certified local comprehensive plan in the town. It's the land use vision map that we don't have. And you're right. Chapter H will allow towns to create their own thresholds so that the land use vision map won't be a requirement anymore. Thank you, Andrew, for getting it right.
So that is huge, and that is absolutely incredible that we have moved forward with that and that we're going to start doing that, because what that means for a lot of the towns, especially, I would say, Barnstable in the Hyannis area, or here in Falmouth, in certain areas within Falmouth where we have large-scale economic development, that we would see more jobs created in that sense. It'd be easier for businesses to move, and it would be easier for them to get approval and to build the necessary facilities, because they're moving into an area that's already been pre-designated as an area in which they can kind of grow and create what they need to create in order to survive here on Cape Cod without having to come before the Cape Cod Commission for approval. Just in case any of you weren't aware, I do want to make sure that it's unknown, that it's about 3.4 months is the average review time for applications that come before the Commission, so raising these thresholds, of course, cuts down on the amount of time that a developer would have to be before any regulatory body in order to get approval for their development. I've thrown a lot of information out there. I'm going to, of course, send that PDF file over to you so that you have those factual pieces. I kind of want to close it out here with one more thing, and I'd definitely love to hear from you questions about what's going on in the Commission, what's going on regionally, or any concerns you may have. But I do want to close it out with this. I did, of course, start by speaking about how there's been a lot of misinformation with the Commission. A lot of towns do have petitioner's articles for this spring. About nine towns actually have it out of the 15 municipalities to withdraw from the Commission. There is no withdrawal provision in the Cape Cod Commission Act, so I'm still a little confused as to how that would even occur if they did get it passed, as it's not legally anywhere. Just want to throw that one out there, kind of confusing to me, but they can certainly try. The other thing, of course, is I had actually attended, I don't know if any of you had seen, I know that there is a certain gentleman who is sending out a lot of emails to a lot of elected officials. I know a lot of them are ignoring his emails now, but there was a debate on Friday night between born select woman Linda Zern and Harwood Selectman Ed McManus about the Commission. Linda Zern, of course, speaking on the side of the Commission is bad, and Ed McManus speaking on the side of the Commission is good. It was interesting to say the least. I didn't know that the Cape Cod Commission was the cause of all the problems, including the sun burning and the moon going away at night in Born, but apparently it is, so I will accept that according to Linda Zern. If she thinks that we are the evil organization that causes all problems, that's fine, but it was interesting to say the least. I will say there, it's definitely been a spirited debate, and I, as Falmouth's representative on the Commission and as the Secretary of the Commission, do plan on continuing to get out there and speak on behalf of the Commission when it is possible, and of course, defend the Commission, not in its entirety. I so hardly believe that with any organization, there's always room for improvement, there's always things we can do better, and there certainly are things that we can do better at the Commission, and those are the things we're currently working on to do better, to make things more streamlined and, of course, to make things more transparent. And I certainly love when government is more streamlined and more transparent. It only leads to good things. But in this instance, I will say that there are a lot of negativity, and I will continue to do my due diligence as your representative and ensure that Falmouth is accurately represented no matter what goes on with this, and to ensure that the Commission continues to have this open line of communication with the Town of Falmouth, and we can continue to get things done, so.
Questions from the board? Actually, I have a couple of questions myself. What is the Commission's budget?
That is a good question. I think that's the one thing I don't have with me, which probably would have been good to have.
It would have been. And I don't suppose you also have a, you've mentioned cost savings for the flyover, so I'm wondering what the cost savings might be if the individual towns were to conduct flyovers versus the Commission doing it.
That I think I do have here. I don't have the Commission's budget on hand. In terms of the cost of the flyover, it will actually save Falmouth, in terms of the Town of Falmouth, an estimated $80,000 as part of the regional flyover project. It will save upwards of $1 million for the region as a whole, so.
Very good.
And that, following up a little bit what Brett had to say, Falmouth's contribution to the Cape Cod Commission?
Falmouth's contribution to the Cape Cod Commission, let's see. This is why I make sure I have everything written down. I don't have the per-year basis. I can't say that taxpayer support from the Town of Falmouth since 1990 has been about
Right. What, and the reason for my question, somewhere in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. I do realize that this is a regional planning organization, but my question is, and folks very often ask me, does Falmouth get its bang for the buck? I look at it, the Cape Cod Commission as the spoke, as the wheel, and, you know, there's spokes out there that go all different directions. Unfortunately, Falmouth is one end of the wheel. Is there a way to qualify or quantify how much Falmouth actually gets in return? I know that we engaged the Cape Cod Commission to help us with the planning, the Spring Bar's Road Project, and because of the success of that, we plan on engaging them to help us in future expansion of that type of role on East Main Street. But the next time we report, it would be great to actually have how much Falmouth pays and how much those services they provide we've gotten back from them in the past year.
I could definitely do that next time. I mean, one of the things I can't speak to, at least at this moment, I don't have any hard numbers in front of me, but I can get those for the board here. If you want to talk about, you know, the Spring Bar's Road Project as an example, that was a moment when, of course, we did need to use the expertise of some of the staff at the Commission in order to get that project, at least on paper, completed. In terms of the amount of money Falmouth saves and what we get back for our money, usually, I mean, if you know it as well as I do, if you hire consultants for town work, if you start hiring expertise outside the town, the dollar kind of, the dollar value definitely adds up there. In terms of this, you don't hire the Commission. The Commission is yours for that price all year long, so a couple of those projects a year, you're definitely making your money back in no time. In fact, even with maybe one project, depending on the scale of it, you're making your money back in no time. I can definitely get those hard-line figures for you, as well as hard-line figures of what it usually costs the town in order for the town to go out and find individuals with that kind of expertise in order to assist with those projects, and just give kind of a comparison of what that is per project basis, so.
Right. But it's easy to throw, oh, we're getting our bang for the buck. When you're spending $500,000 bucks, I don't really know any consultant that's going to charge us $500,000. So we need to really quantify and qualify actually what we're getting back out of it. You know, and I'm playing devil's advocate here, because a lot of folks ask, wouldn't we be better off hiring one or two more professional planners in the Town of Falmouth and save ourselves $300,000 and have a little autonomy? I don't think so, but I think those are the type of things, at a meeting like this, we need to be able to tell the public what we're getting out of the Cape Cod Commission.
Certainly.
Okay?
I just want to say, Andrew, you have done a great job, really, of presenting a lot of this information. One thing, when the Commission was first established, this, the cost to the town, or not to the town, to the individual property owner. So originally, when the Commission was formed, I think it was 1988, 1989, the cost per homeowner, per property owner, was $15 on your, on what you contributed through taxes. Now it's $20. So in all these years, it has only gone up $5 for the citizen. The town only collects these funds. You probably see them on the cherry sheet, because they come from the Environmental Protection Department. They are the ones who really make the assessments, and the Cape Cod Commission is the regional planning agency for Cape Cod. Every single city and town in the Commonwealth is part of a regional planning agency. If you look at a map of the Commonwealth, and you want a map of regional planning agencies, you will find that there is one for, I don't know how many citizens. I think there might be 28... is one for, I don't know how many citizens, I think there might be 28 or 30, some, regional planning agencies, and by charter, the Commission is the planning agency for Cape Cod. That's just how it works. There'll always be a regional planning agency, there'll always be that assessment to the regional planning agency. So, in this case, it's not so much that it's the Commission that receives it, it's the Environmental Protection Department that receives it and distributes it through the regional planning agency. So, that's how it works. But it's just that the Commission performs that function on the Cape, whereas in other areas, they have different organizations for the regional planning agency.
Certainly.
So, and then it's very easy to find, and I know Andrew will do it, is find out exactly how much the town has received through services from the, see, the other thing is, we don't have impact fees. We have not been, for some reason, we can't assess, the Planning Board can't assess impact fees on developers. In other states, they do. If you were going to build a mall, say, in, I don't know, I can, I'll pick Virginia, because I lived in Virginia, what they would do is, they would assess what it would cost to do traffic widening, traffic lights, sewer connections, improvements, and those developers would be assessed impact fees for all those costs. So, what the Commission does, in a sense, is it's an impact fee, but it isn't because the towns can't do it. So, you don't, we don't get anything back for what the cost that we have to put out on a development, and so this is, this is how it works. I don't want to take up his time on this.
What I understand is, even the town does program budgeting, so we know what certain things cost, and I'm sure the Cape Cod Commission does, it would be very good to be able to see and show folks what we're getting for our dollar here.
That's right. And that's what they've been doing. I was in Bourne the other night, Paul Netzweke gave a presentation to the town of Bourne on the work that the Commission has done for the last year, and what services they've provided, and what the cost of those services have been, and actually what the, what the board, what the town of Bourne, the citizens of Bourne were assessed for that. And he's been going to all the different towns, so I'm sure he'll be here fairly soon and give that presentation on what Falmouth has received. And now, I think that a Planning Board has already asked the Commission, again, to assist with visioning, a visioning project that we're working on, so they've already had a couple of meetings already with the Commission staff. So, we are taking, it's up to us to take advantage, you know, you can't, they're not going to, so anything you want, it's the Reset Team, which is the Regional Economic Strategy Group from the Commission that come and perform those services for the town. They call it a reset.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Andrew, beat me up later for taking your time.
You know, and that's certainly a good point, it's just how much it costs. If you compare the Commission, Cape Cod Commission assessment to the average taxpayer on Cape Cod from 1991, all the way up to now, 2014, it only grew 29 percent. Now, if you compare that with other things that we deal with on a daily basis, your tax bill since now and then has actually gone up 162 percent. You know, there's a huge difference in terms of the cost of the Commission versus other things, and that's definitely a thing I hear a lot, and that a lot of people have started to say, is, you know, well, really, how cost-effective is the Cape Cod Commission? How efficient are they with our money? The truth is, very efficient. The fact that your tax, that your tax bill's gone up 162 percent, yet the assessment for the Commission has only gone up 29 percent, is evidence right there. In fact, almost half of the funds for the Cape Cod Commission actually come through as grants from the federal government, from the state, in order to do these projects, in order to assist the towns in a lot of the services that we are providing currently. I mean, I could keep going down the list here, your bread has gone up 63 percent, your bacon, you know, pound of it has gone up 128 percent.
We get the idea.
So, in terms of inflation, you're doing pretty well with the Commission, probably not so well with bacon, but definitely doing well with the Commission, so.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one more question. You mentioned that town meeting articles are not the way to withdraw from the Commission. How would a town, if it wanted to withdraw from the Commission, what would they have to do?
That's a good question. That's even questionable, whether that's even possible.
I can answer that. A town cannot withdraw because the, we did not become part of the Commission by a town vote. If you remember, it was on the ballot, it was a countywide ballot back in 1991, it was 1989, it was a total countywide ballot on the same November ballot that every citizen in every town in Barnstable had to vote on the petition for the Cape Cod Commission. So, it was, it was countywide, so it was a majority of all the voters on the Cape who've actually voted the Cape Cod Commission in, it wasn't by town. So, it would, and besides the act doesn't, the act doesn't really allow for that kind of withdrawal, but I suppose if somebody attempted some way to have a countywide referendum on a November ballot, and I'm not sure that that's the, that the actual legal way to withdraw, I just know that the towns did not vote to go in the Cape Cod Commission, it was, it was each citizen's vote.
Right. And I know to add to that, that the, there was only one town in 1988 where there was a, not a majority vote to join and create the Cape Cod Commission, and that was the town of Bourne. And again, they're part of the Cape Cod Commission, so it definitely does show right there that it would probably have to be a regional referendum. But even so, one of the things, of course, that's crossed my mind is, even if people were successful in some strange way, which is highly improbable, you know, we've already said it before, Mary Pat already said earlier, you know, that the entirety of the state is covered in regional planning agencies, so if you get rid of the Commission, they're going to replace it with something else, and back in 1988, they gave Falmouth and every other town here a choice, and they gave us the ability to vote on such a thing. You may not have the same thing now, and in fact, you may not even have the local control you have now. Right now, you appoint me as a representative for a three-year term, three years comes up, you get to judge whether or not I've done a sufficient job representing the town of Falmouth and representing Falmouth's interest in the Cape Cod Commission. They could come back, you know, if we were, that happened, and say, we're going to create a regional planning agency where you don't have a say, where this is how the rules work, this is how people are put on there, and the towns don't get to appoint individual representatives. Because certainly, we are one of the very few regional planning agencies where that's even possible, so, just to throw that out.
And I think the regional planning agencies are state-mandated, they're not town or county mandated, they're state-mandated.
Just one last quote, Andrew, you've come a long way, buddy.
Yeah.
Questions from the audience? Mr. Fenner?
Mark Fenner in Precinct 6. Not a question, I just want to point out something with your arithmetic. To compare the Cape Cod Commission against the price of a loaf of bread or a pound of bacon, isn't really equitable, because, and actually, Paul Netzweke used $14 and $18, it's his number, you used 15 and 20. But you have to realize, in the last 25 years, the number of properties have almost doubled, so it's really not a comparison, because twice as many properties are paying that amount. So, they've more than doubled, plus the 29 percent, so it's really not a fair arithmetic that you're using. That's all. Thanks.
Any other questions?
If I may just speak to that, Mary Pat was actually the one who said 15 to 20, I do have written down that it was closer to $14 and $18. And in terms of, like I said, I compared it to the tax bill, which has increased over 160 percent. There may be twice as many homes, but they're paying way more now for taxes on their tax bills than they were, you know, 20 years ago, so. And lastly, of course, I will point out that the Commission has cut staff in the last seven years. Since Paul came on board as the Executive Director, we did change, like I said, we only have about 10 percent of our staff being regulatory. When he came on, it was more like 90 percent of the staff were regulatory, so there was a complete switch in terms of our priorities from regulatory to planning. Most of our money, of course, like I said, comes from grants, and of course, your tax bill has not increased very much in terms of what is contributed to the Cape Cod Commission in 20 years. So, I would definitely say that we're definitely very efficient, we're definitely moving in a positive direction. With less staff, less money coming in, we're definitely doing the best we can and being as efficient as possible, so.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The board's going to take a five-minute recess. We've been here for a few hours now. Stretch our legs, we'll be back at 9:05. Gentlemen, the board is coming back from a brief recess. The next item on our agenda is a request for fee waiver from the Falmouth Farmers Market. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Karen Schwalbe, I'm President of the Farmers Market Board, and as part of the Agricultural Commission was one of the founders of the Falmouth Farmers Market. We're here tonight to ask for a waiver for the regulation for the fee requests for the 2014 season. We've been up here a lot of times, you have heard many of the benefits that the market brings to the community. The basis that we are asking for this fee waiver is the direct tangible benefit that we provide to the town by the maintenance and our stewardship of the park. You have before you some of the numbers that Kate Mahoney, our Market Manager, put together, which in our estimation is exceeding the value of the request, the fee request.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Go ahead.
No, you go. Well, I was going to ask the Town Manager to talk about the, I know they've done new landscaping now at the park, and what kind of program the town has to provide, or how does that fit in with what the Farmers Market has been doing?
Certainly happy to comment on that. As noted in the past, particularly in the past year, and the board has a memorandum from Rocky Gomes confirming the partnership in 2013 in which the Farmers Market representatives aerated, top-dressed, seeded the grass surfaces in the park, and that was in furtherance of the, I believe it actually was a fee exemption granted by the board last year as opposed to a waiver under your policy. And as Sluckman Flynn mentioned, there is a re-landscaping process which is about to be embarked upon by Rocky Gomes and his crew for Pegg Noon Park, including the rebuilding of the performance stage. We have a report on that a little later this evening, but there will be an entire re-landscaping of Pegg Noon Park as part of that process. And my understanding from Rocky Gomes is that as part of that process, really the only additional maintenance work needed in the coming 2014 year would be periodic watering of the grass as opposed to the aerating, top-dressing, and seeding. And again, that will be a re-landscaping process embarked upon by Rocky and his crews, beginning the middle part of the month to come and continuing through most of the month of May. That's my understanding. Again, there'll be a presentation on that to the board on your agenda a little later on.
Okay. So, the, what we have here from the Farmers Market is an in-kind representation of the services that they've provided in the past, and Mr. Gomes, per his memo, he notes that he's reviewed the in-kind services and see they're over and above the scope of work that's agreed upon. He finds the report to be consistent with his observations of the work they've performed at the park. They've tallied these, this work, at almost $8,000, which far exceeds the value They've tallied these, this work at almost $8,000, which far exceeds the value of the fees that the town has asked for. So even if we were to remove, I'm assuming it's the seeding of the lawn that is, and Mr. Gomes, perhaps you can speak to this, even if the Farmers Market didn't need to do this, the seeding and the aerating and such, it would appear that their in-kind services would still exceed the value of the fees that are usually required from them?
Yes, definitely. This year, I mean, sorry, last, in the past year, they did plant a lot of annuals in the park. They did a lot of trimming of the bushes, of the hedges, trees and stuff. They, I mean, they really did take care of the place well and above than we expected. In the coming year, I don't, I still expect to do all the work that they've done, but we're going to do it in-house this year. We're really going to have to work on that plan. And as I said, as Mr. Suso spoke, we do have a presentation on that soon.
Okay.
But they have definitely done their jobs there.
So is it, is it fair to say then that if we're going to do the work in-house, we don't need the help of the Farmers Market? Is that what you're saying?
No, I would still ask that they would continue to water the park as they have, but as far as the landscape maintenance of the park, no, that'll all be done in-house.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I guess that puts you folks at a sudden disadvantage. I don't think you expected that one, and I know I didn't.
We did not know coming in what the extent of the work that would be done this year and how much of that we would still be doing. Talking to Rocky now, I mean, we would still be able to water, and that's probably the biggest need he has. And that's, you know, we're down an hour or two during the evenings during the week to be able to do that.
Okay. Some questions?
A couple of questions. What is the number of vendors that you have? Typical?
Eighteen, sixteen to eighteen is typical.
Okay. And what are the vendor fees?
I think four hundred and eighty this year.
Per vendor?
For a season.
Last year, there was specifically, and this is, this is all related to the fees. There was specifically one vendor that was selling a baked good that was manufactured in Hyannis. And we discussed that. There was complaints, and we had a meeting, and it was too late in the year because they had already paid for the year to omit that vendor. Quite candidly, one of the things that I want to make sure of is that we don't already entice that vendor because it's not a, it's not a grown product, it's a made product. Not all of it is made from scratch. Some of it is a par-baked product, manufactured product, that the bakery just bakes off and brings here and sells right across the street.
Mr. Murphy, I'm going to stop you right here because this is a request for a fee waiver.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, but it's not a discussion about which vendors are selling what goods at the market. If that's a concern, then we perhaps should have a sit-down discussion with the leadership of the Farmers Market and talk about that. But right now, we need to focus on the fee waiver. I don't want to get off topic.
It is focusing on the fee waiver because what I'm going to ask, it's going to surely dictate my vote here because are we using this property as a commercial property? Meaning, are we bringing in folks that are not selling, you know, a Farmers Market product, a manufactured product on property that is a municipal product, property that is not a commercial property? And so I'm trying to find out.
That's outside the scope of this discussion.
Of course it is not. If they're going to charge someone commercially to use that property, I want the fees for the town. The fellow's manufacturing a product, in some cases, that is, he's buying a product that he's baking off. Alls he does is put it in an oven. So if he's going to use town property for that.
So you're suggesting that the baker on Main Street, all they do is put it in the oven?
The bakery on Main Street?
Yes.
No, I'm suggesting that one of their vendors just merely puts it in their oven and brings it here and then sells it. One of the, one of the vendors there at the Farmers Market is a Hyannis Bakery that has some of their products that are bake-off products. I can buy them at my own restaurant.
Okay. Well, I understand that, but the fact of the matter is, is that we're getting into the details of what vendors are selling what goods, if that's going to have an impact on your vote. And quite honestly, I think what we're going to need to do here anyway is for you folks to perhaps sit down with Mr. Gomes and figure out if there is any in-kind services that can be presented, or else if you want to come back and propose something different in terms of the, what may be presented for, whether it's a complete fee waiver, a complete exemption, or a partial fee waiver. But it's, again, I don't want to get into a discussion about what vendors are selling what goods because I do believe that that's outside of the scope of what we're talking about here. We've been presented with a proposal from the Farmers Market for in-kind donation that they've done in years past, and whether or not that is sufficient to warrant a waiver of the fee, either in part or in total. There's new information tonight to all of us that some of those in-kind services may not be needed, and therefore I think the market may need to go back and have some additional discussions about what, if anything, they can do for in-kind services, or if there might be some need to pay a sum or all of the fee that would be requested. So I'll leave that in your hands.
Yes, certainly we'll have to go back. Most of the board is not in town at the moment. And one of the things that we are trying to prevent with, you know, asking for the fee waiver is in turn having to pass heavier fees on to our vendors. We have one vendor that Mr. Murphy objects to part of his products, but twenty percent of the sales, or twenty percent of our spots over the season are filled with Thalmud resident vendors. We've had an increase this year. We have five new residents of Thalmud who are looking for a spot at the market this year. We would in turn have to pass those fees back on to them. Most municipal Farmers Markets are charged between zero and a hundred dollars a season for their spots. A $2,300 fee to use a space is pretty far outside the norm for the state. Our market fees for the Cape itself are already high. We have insurance costs that are substantial as well as, you know, the amount of time the market manager actually spends managing the market. So we are afraid we will price out the people who, especially the local people who are trying to start up and farm. So, you know, the biggest strength that we can monetize for asking for the fee waiver is the in-kind support. There are plenty of benefits that the market offers the community that are a lot harder to monetize. The community aspect of what we're doing, people farming and maintaining the rural agricultural landscape of the town. And those are real merits too, just harder to put money to. So, and just like those not to be forgotten as the decisions being made.
I notice also there is a bit of a time constraint because if we all of a sudden add a $2,300 bill to the Farmers Market, they need to be able to know to pass that on to vendors pretty soon. I would like, as a starting point, I would like to at least not, I would be starting instead at about half of the $2,300 in recognition of the vast amount of work that was done in last summer when we were not able to do, the town was not able to do it. And that's been, you know, Mr. Gomes has said, they did do all that. And so even as a starting point, as opposed to starting at $2,300, I would say, let's start at, we're talking, the worst would be $1,100 or, you know, $1,200, and then work from there.
Okay. Ms. Murphy, you have your hand?
Yes, I just, when I looked at this amount, this is just a one-time, I mean, what you have listed here, you're not doing this, you're not maintaining that area every year.
That, the first year we maintained the park to that extent was last year.
To this, to this extent?
Yes.
So in saying that the town has actually provided much of the, taken care of that park for you?
I think if you've seen the before and after pictures, I mean, the amount of time that the town has had to care for that park has been limited. It sounds like there's a new initiative that is happening with the DPW to be able to take on the park and to bring it up to a different standard. But some of those improvements have happened over the years. The big energy last year was getting the grass reseeded and maintained.
I think the basis of my question is how much has the town invested in Peg Noonan Park for you being there as Farmers Market, is my point, in saying that as I look at this list, and if this comes up to 79.50, how much has the town done for the Farmers Market over a period of time? And you may call that in-kind because you want to have a certain look there, and that's fine, that's your choice. But the town has also invested in Peg Noonan Park, and they've put their money into it. So I look at it as you've had the benefit of what the town has given you over a period of years.
I hear that.
I'd like to propose something, and the proposal is that I wholeheartedly want to make sure that many local farmers can participate in this. So rather than, i.e., give a fee waiver of the $2,300 and a half of it, what you're talking about, I'd much prefer to say that we split it, and that additional $1,200 that needs to be passed on would be used as scholarships to help reduce the cost of local farmers. Roughly twenty percent is what you're saying? So that, in other words, would waive, would waive half of it, but that half of it would be to reduce the cost of those additional, those Thalmud farmers. So in other words, we'd charge you $1,200 and $1,100 would be to be used, in other words, would waive the fee. But that fee would be for reduced cost for those Thalmud people who want to participate in the Farmers Market. You know, I know there's some great people there from Thalmud, and that's what I want to continue to encourage. You know, folks who are out there, and maybe the local ones, they're so small, they can't participate, but it would provide an incentive for them to participate. There are such things as two-tier systems in fees. And one would be, if you're not a Thalmud resident, you pay one fee, and then if you are a Thalmud resident, you pay another. So that's what I'd like to, you can do it any way you want, but what I'm saying is, I would propose that we provide, in our in-kind services back to you, that you give these discounts to Thalmud farmers. That would, I could go along with something like that, as long as we're encouraging local people to be able to participate in locally grown stuff, meaning the town of Thalmud. I know locally grown is considered within a hundred miles, but I really consider locally grown in the town of Thalmud. So that's where I could probably eventually come back to.
Mr. Murphy, you could have been sitting with us on Saturday morning. We basically had the same discussion, if we have the fees enacted, how are we going to protect the Thalmud resident, the farmers? And, you know, there are bakers, there are farmers from Thalmud who we don't want to see that fee waiver happen to. That being said, yeah, I mean, I can see you suggest it. I want us to be careful about how much the town manages our day-to-day operations and not to be, we haven't looked at what that means in the long run, and I don't want to get caught making a promise that might hurt us later financially or from a business perspective. But I do love how you've approached it. It's something that we are looking at, and we hope to be able to put together. So what that looks like, you know, would be important to us.
Is it something that you can bring back to your board? And if we schedule you folks for two weeks, would that be sufficient time to discuss that with them, to discuss with Mr. Gomes what possibly in-kind could be done, and then come back to us with a new proposal?
So, yeah, if you would, kind of, let's go over, it would be a complete fee exemption for this year, a partial, or how?
Several possibilities. One is what Mr. Murphy is suggesting is that, and even Mr. Jones has suggested it, that allowing for a reduction in the fees by half, and Mr. Murphy suggested that that reduction should be not applied, that what is paid in fees should be applied in such a way that the Thalmud farmers benefit, so that, for example, they're not having to pay any increase in fees, but an out-of-town farmer or vendor would have to pay the increase to cover that $1,200 or $1,100 that's being suggested that the market pay, as opposed to the full $2,300.
Okay.
And the other possibility is that you folks could work with Mr. Gomes to come up with a potential in-kind for all or part of that $2,300 in order to, you know, get the fee waiver as requested.
I guess I would put it the other way, that I would rather see that the $1,200 is the fee, with what Mr. Murphy's saying, and you get that $1,200 reduced by doing some of the watering.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
That there's still a possibility to reduce that more by whatever Mr. Gomes said. You know, there is a dollar amount to having that watered on a regular basis that would benefit the town. So there's still a potential for in-kind services to reduce the even more.
Through the chair, can we ask Mr. Gomes right now if that's a number he's comfortable coming up with? The value of our watering to the town?
Yeah, not today, but sure.
Okay. I was thinking we could end it now, but, all right, then, yeah, we would be willing to come back in two weeks and be able to finish this conversation.
Okay. Were comfortable with that?
Well, just so we know, if we waived the rest of the fees, there is no benefit to the Thalmud farmers. So we've got to show a benefit to the Thalmud farmers in this, meaning there's still got to be a differential in the fees.
Well, what I'm hearing is that half of that differential is basically a scholarship or a grant to the Thalmud farmers, and the other, or what percentage left over based on the watering cost, or, how do we want to phrase it?
All right, I think you've got it.
Yeah, I do understand.
Okay. All right. So we'll see you in two weeks.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have a shellfish aquaculture license request, Mary and Steve Murphy, Great Harbor Woods Hole. Mr. Murphy, good evening.
I'm Steve Murphy. I've been before you before. My wife is still deployed, so she's not here. She'll be hopefully here next, a little bit after next month.
Okay.
I started this process in October, I was before you with Eric Mattson. He is pretty much, pretty much the same license application as myself. I realized it was interesting going through all the eight different agencies to get this done, it's not a real quick process.
And you're to be commended for doing it.
Eric did a lot of the work. Like I said, I'm not the bookworm and speaker that he is, but I'm looking for a positive vote for this, and hopefully license will come, and while I've come some, we'll have a project to do together.
Mr. Chairman, just for disclosure purposes, I own a restaurant that sells a large quantity of shellfish.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the shelter aquaculture license for Mary and Steve Murphy in Great Harbor Woods Hole.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Questions or comments from the public? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you very much, and hopefully the next time I appear, my wife will be here instead. Thank you.
You did fine, don't worry.
I have the document to sign. Next item on the agenda, we have high school renovation project proposed settlement. For the public's edification, what this is, is simply a release. This is literally, and for all intents and purposes, it is the last of the settlements with respect to the high school. And the only reason the town is involved in this is because we are the property owners. What happened here is that this is a release that the town has to sign between the contractor and one of the subcontractors, a landscaper for the high school renovation project. And because they were in a dispute that involved town property, of course, the town was named in that dispute. They have now come to an agreement and a settlement, and the town has to sign off on it because, again, we were named. We had no party to this dispute, and we were simply named because we were the property owners. Are there any questions from the board? All right. Basically, we need to approve the settlement. Do we have a motion doing so?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the public? With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Do you believe, is it a copy in here for us to sign, or if it's? All right. Next item on the agenda, we have a town hall parking update. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have town engineer Peter McConerty with us tonight, just going to make this presentation. It looks to me like he stepped out of the room for a moment. He has maps and related information to present to the board. I think Peter's just coming back in now. Peter, we're just giving that presentation now on the proposed modest adjustments in parking here at Town Hall Square. I should advise the board that I convened an internal working group of staff members I should advise the board that I convened a, an internal working group of staff members, Peter prominently involved in that, Brian Curry as well, myself and others, and we bring to the board some suggestions that, with Peter's help, we'll summarize. I think the board has a reduced copy of a map. At the end of the day, the purpose of this is essentially to provide a higher level of service to our customers coming into Town Hall. I know the board is fully aware, as I have become very aware during my couple of past summers here as a town manager, that residents who are coming into transact business in Town Hall, particularly in the busier summer months, can't find a place to park. And we're not providing very good service to them in that regard. And reviewing it internally, we also have a challenge that employees frequently have difficulty finding a place to park as well. And one of the major challenges is that we have some summer visitors, and it tends to spike up in the summertime. We have a little bit of experience year-round, but particularly in the summer, we have folks who park here overnight in Town Hall Square and visit the vineyard, as opposed to paying the normal fees to the steamship authority, as do most other individuals. And we feel that a combination of some of these modest adjustments, as well as some signage, with the concurrence of the board, would allow us to provide a really significantly improved customer service to residents whom we're here to serve. And if the board would allow us to go forward with this, we would move forward at an appropriate speed to allow this to have a positive impact in the coming summer season. So maybe without further ado, perhaps I could have Peter make some summary comments, Mr. Chairman, if that be in order?
Good evening, Peter McConerty, town engineer. As town manager, Mr. Suso had explained, for the reason we were looking at this, the parking lot, we went through several phases, different options and different phases to increase the parking in the area and in the, in the parking lot, and immediate changes that can be made to the parking area. I was shown in the plan, I think you have some eleven-by-seventeens. This is a full-size plan. There's, there's nine parking spaces over across from the taxi service, adjacent to Walker Street, between Glidwood and Walker Street. Those nine spaces, we're looking at putting up parking for municipal vehicles only, so we'll be looking at the white, the white vehicles, the blue plates. We're also looking at putting two spaces, possibly three, adjacent to and in front of the, the Oddfellows Hall. The Oddfellows Hall, as everyone knows, is that's been, that's going to be converted. They're going to be doing some, some of their own parking, but as far as the town property, we're looking at putting two spaces, possibly three in that area. In front of the triangle, the green, green directly out front, there's a possibility of putting three additional spaces in that area. And on the right-hand side of the, of the Town Hall, in the back, we could fit another three, another three parking spaces back there. So in the red, what I had is proposed parking spaces. I had sixteen, it's actually, if you count them, is seventeen. And if we get a, a third spot in front of the Oddfellows Hall, it'll be eighteen. So for parking spaces in, in Town Hall existing right now, we have one hundred and forty-six standard spaces, and that includes all of Town Hall. And we have five accessible spaces, the ADA accessible spaces. We have, we have several out front, we have four up towards, by the bowling alley, and we have two, two ADA parking spaces in the back of the building. So what we're looking at doing is the, adding the municipal spots at the, across from the taxi service, adding two, two in front of the Oddfellows Hall, three at the, at the end of the triangle, and, and we're going to put a, in the back of the lot, we're looking at the veterans' business services, there's two ADA spots in the back of this Town Hall. The third space then will be reserved for veteran business only. And we also were looking at, in front of Town Hall, the very front row and the row just across, the second row, we're looking at putting up times, town signage that would be reserved parking for Town Hall business, eight o'clock to four-thirty. So that would, that would just be strictly for Town Hall business. That's basically a summary of the plans that we're looking at doing. And, and, excuse me, and also one other, we're looking at putting some municipal lock, no overnight parking between one and six. I believe there might be some overnight parking with vehicles that might go over to the island, or might, so, might deter them from parking for multiple days in the parking lot.
Where do employees park? In any of the?
Well, what we're trying to do is, this is, this is a, a phase one of an option. We're working, there's, there's other options that are available, we're working at, but it, that's, it's, that goes, take a little bit more work and a little bit more planning. This is the immediate changes that we can make here. What we're, what we're looking at doing is the nine spaces where the taxi service is, the white vehicles go there overnight. In the mornings, when the, when the employees show up, they can pull the white vehicle out and put their vehicle there, and that'll save it for the day, and then, in the end of the day, they put the white vehicle back in that spot. So that'll take away nine spots right there for the, for the employee parking. And then the, the additional two and the three, and the, the additional three in the side of the building, that will add for additional parking. Right now, we do have some employee vehicles go over to, to the DPW building, and they park the white vehicles there, and then when they go out to do their inspections, they drive over there, leave their car, do their inspections and come back. So there's, there's a little bit of that going on, too. Right now, at Town Hall, we have twelve town vehicles that park here in the parking lot, so we'll be looking at, those are the, basically the vehicles that we wanted to, so basically we got the twelve cars, and the other twelve personal vehicles, that would be twenty-four vehicles, so.
I guess my other question is, do you really think you need those other spaces across from the very front spaces for town business? Wouldn't you think that one row would be enough, or no?
Yeah.
There are more people than that in Town Hall at one time?
My understanding is that, now, we've been, I, I've been out of the engineering, you know, I'm on the second floor since two thousand and nine, but I remember when I come to here meetings now, and I remember back in two thousand and nine, would be circling the parking lot, looking, looking for spaces, and a lot of times in the front, you do, I've seen, before two thousand, when we were here up on the second floor, I've seen vehicles, they park and they basically unload the vehicles, and they, they might walk down to surf drive, or they might go down downtown for the day or what have you. So we'd like to just restrict that, just for the Town Hall parking, just for the Town Hall business only.
Ms. Murphy?
How many employees in Town Hall use, need a parking spot?
I believe the town planner did a count on those, and I, and I believe it was fifty-six, it was in the fifty-six to sixty? Yeah.
And where do they, where are they here? I mean, where, where are they parking?
Right now, they're scattered, they're parking. I would say most of the town, most of the personal vehicles are parking in this triangle area.
In the tri, okay.
On both sides, in the triangle area, and some of the vehicles do park in the, in the front. I think, I don't think they park in the front rows, some of them are parked in the, in the second row.
Is there any advantage to the people who work in Town Hall to have a sticker on their car to say that, that would identify it as, as police would look for any violations that would be there? Is there a benefit to that?
Um, there's been talk about that, we did mention that. I don't know if town manager, if.
Yeah, if I just interject, that would be considered possibly as a phase two. Peter's talking about some modest, these are very modest adjustments. What we don't want to have to do is assign a police officer here to be doing enforcement all day. It wouldn't be a good use of manpower and resources. So we're hopeful that this is an important first step, and while it's not going to solve all our ills, we think it'll go a long way. If we would need to go as far as issuing stickers, we could do that, but we're reluctant to do it at this point, just because when you issue stickers, you have to get into enforcement, and that's going to tie up, as I say, manpower. We think we're going to get cooperation on people that come into Town Hall, parking in designated areas, employees parking in other areas, and, and I think everybody recognizes that if we all work together, we'll all be better off, and we can always go to that phase two. Right now, for instance, in general, employees are able to be accommodated because we have fewer people coming into Town Hall. We know that's starting, going to be picking up soon, and the exception to that is, as Peter referred to, that we have significant meetings of staff members of different departments in the town. Sometimes they can't find enough parking spaces. So again, this is just a step one, and maybe stickers or some additional step would be warranted. If that would be the case, before we'd consider, we'd come back to the board, we want to talk about it at some further length.
Thank you.
Well, the reserve parking for Town Hall business, do you think it makes any sense to have a timeframe suggestion, like hour limit, whether we're limiting it to thirty minutes or an hour, or something like that?
We, we did have that, we did have that as an option for signage. Actually, we had that on some plans last week, we were kicking back and forth. But what we did is, we went with the, we had two signs, but we went with the one sign, the reserve for Town Hall parking. That's a possibility. Right now, there's basically twenty-four spaces between those two sides. There'll be twenty-four spaces and two, two ADA spaces in that, so.
All right, I guess I understand what Mr. Suso's saying, really, we're not going to be setting up anything that can be enforced, with the exception of overnight parking.
Correct. We're looking for voluntary compliance if we can get it, and we think that'll go a long way. Will it be a hundred percent? No. But that's our hope.
Couple of questions. All of these spaces, are they town property? I thought at one point in time, someone told me the spaces in front of the law office were owned by the, the law office. Is that all town property?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's town property, it's town spaces. The law office does have a side parking lot where they park in. There are vehicles that do park in those spaces to use the law offices.
Yeah, I, I, for some reason, I thought someone had told me at one point in time that was actually, that property in front was owned by them, but I, I could be wrong if you told me that.
Yeah. I, I haven't seen any documentation on it, but I, I do know that they have a side parking lot for their clients, but, you know, often you do see the vehicles, they park there and they go into the.
Okay. Then last, last question. These spaces in the front, the ones for, you know, reserved for Town Hall business, those aren't for employees, that's for someone coming here for a meeting?
Business.
Right, or something like that, not town people on the payroll?
No, no, not, not, not at this time, not at all.
Just for customers?
Customers, yeah. And, and there are times in the summertime, the bowling alley is, is very active, so that, that gets a lot of business. The human services is very active, that gets a lot of business, so it, it gets busy here in the summertime. With this, with these increases in parking spaces, that'll bring us up to one sixty-one, so, one, one six, one sixty-nine. We'll be going up from one fifty-one to one sixty-nine, with a possible, if we might be able to fit a few more spaces in.
And one thing I don't want to discourage, just because we have these twelve spaces here for municipal vehicles, I don't want to discourage anyone from parking at the DPW. Because, in other words, the, the town vehicles, as well as their own vehicles, every space we take away from this area?
Yeah.
Is a space, space that takes away from Main Street, takes away from everybody else. I mean, the DPW building has a lot of room out there. Very seldom have I ever seen, you know, those lots fall out there, so anything specifically town employees that we can encourage. In other words, not require them to park in these twelve spaces, but if they want to, they can park the white vehicles. But anyone we can get to the DPW barn would be a better alternative.
Yeah. It, it works pretty well now. Usually, the, either the employees will come to work in the morning, they'll go by the, the town, the DPW, and pick up their vehicle, switch their vehicles, or leave their vehicle there, or they'll come into work, do the work they need to do, and then when they go out into inspections, they drive over and switch their vehicles. So it's not two vehicles in the lot, it's just one in the slot.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify one item? When we talk about customers versus employees, I just want to clarify that, as the board's aware, that from time to time, we have meetings in Town Hall that involve employees who don't work in Town Hall. So obviously, I prefer that they don't take one of these spaces that's safe for Town Hall business. However, if there's nowhere else to park, and they're not an employee of Town Hall, I would expect that they're going to park there and come to their meeting. You know, that's part of the idea, is that, that when I talk about employees, I mean employees of Town Hall. And as Peter said, they are, tend to be sprinkled throughout the parking lot now. So again, I just want to emphasize, to the extent the board is comfortable, this would be a modest improvement. It's not going to solve all our ills. I believe it would be very, very much appreciated by customers that we provide a better level of service to and respect for, and also our employees will be accommodated a little bit better than we've been able to in the past. So as a start, we'd want to monitor it and get back to the board as well.
So one last, one last question on that, and you brought up about the overnight parking. In that case, I think we need to have a hook, meaning, in other words, a little bit of a stick, if there is overnight parking. I think we need to have someone ride by any of the tickets, those cars.
Correct, yeah.
And maybe not right at one o'clock, because some of these places empty at one in the middle of the night. Because we all know, Brett, you're on the committee, there are folks parking in these parking lots, as well as here, that are walking to the steamship and saving themselves twenty bucks a day.
Yes. Yeah, we, we're, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Just to interject, I've been in conversation already with Chief Dunn, and, and our signage, which we would post, again, we're not going to be posting this tomorrow. If the board allows us to proceed, we'd be transitioning this in so that it, the intent would be, so that it would be effective, you know, when things pick up here in the summer. So we appreciate, you know, the board's patience as we walk through this. And the creation of new spaces won't happen overnight either, but it's a template for an improvement. But as far as the, no overnight parking, that would be something that we would want to have in place for the summertime, and the, the vehicles, who in spite of the signage would choose to ignore that, would be subject to towing, and we would make that clear with a notification on the sign.
And just so everyone's aware, too, Julian has, you know, updated Doug and I on, on some of this stuff in, in preparation for this, when we were planning the meeting. One of the things that came to light is that, in fact, the town parking regulations do in fact limit parking on town lots to two hours, and on the street to one hour. It's just, it's not posted, and it's not enforced at this time. So it is something for consideration as we move forward, that when we talk about whether we want meters on Main Street or not, one of the things that is, as Mr. Suso mentions, incremental steps, one of the steps that we may want to consider taking is posting these things, or, or looking at those regulations and saying, how long is appropriate, and then making sure it's enforced. Because I can tell you from my own personal experience in, you know, frequenting businesses on Main Street, I've seen folks park cars on, right on Main Street, and then walk into a business, people who own the businesses, or people who work in these businesses, and in fact, there was one gentleman that I know, I don't know the gentleman, but I've seen him move his car from place to place on Main Street, and he must either live or work in the vicinity of Main Street, because I see that car in a different spot on an almost weekly basis. It seems to be hovering around, and I think that there is a little bit of abuse in, in terms of the, the parking on Main Street. So it's something to consider as we look ahead to other possible phases. So any questions or comments from the board?
Just want to say, I think it's a very good start, and it's going to be very welcome, I think, to people, to the customers, and, and probably to the employees, too, because they can, for the most part, know where, where they can park. I think it's a good start, and we'll see how it works.
Any questions or comments from the public?
Good. Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Suso, do you want a vote from the board?
I would appreciate if the board would indicate, willing us to allow me to move forward on this and begin interpretation.
I would move to show our support for Mr. Suso and Mr. McConerty's plan for the parking lot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, unanimous. And next item on the agenda is an update regarding the Pagnunin Performance Stage, and I believe there's going to be some additional information about the park itself, right?
Yes, Rocky Gomes is going to give us that presentation. I appreciate all of Rocky's assistance, as well as Peter McConerty's in replacing the performing stage and the re-landscaping that we referred to.
Good evening, I'm Rocky Gomes, park superintendent and tree warden of Town of Thalmith. Come here to report on our upcoming renovation of Pagnunin Park. We, in-house with the, with the new staff that we, we have, we did come up with a new plan with the help of the engineering department. Pagnunin Park, two years ago, we had a vote of town meeting to replace the, the performance stage there, and we've, we've gone over plans, different places, different things to do. We finally came to, to this plan. The sheriff's department's going to assist us in the building of the, of the new structure. More recently, in placing the structure, we went into the park and we looked, we took a look at Quanzen Cherry Tree that's in the corner of the park now. It's a beautiful tree, it's, it's just really in, in distress right now, there's now. It's a beautiful tree. It's just really in distress right now. There's a big cavity in the center of the tree. That is, that is an issue. One of the leaders off of the tree, the kids climb up into, is ready to come down if we had too many kids in there. So it's my.
Can you point on the map, where that's located now, pardon the chairman?
Right now, it's right here. As you see, we're kind of placing the stage, because we like to put it now that that tree is, you know, is going to be taken out. It is a tree. It was a nice tree for many years. I don't see that it's going to last another year or so. But with that leader taken out, it would be very unbalanced. It would be, it would really be an eyesore. So certainly, we do need to remove that. And, you know, we do have a few other things that we will do in the park here that.
Mr. Gomes, if you could grab the microphone, if you, yeah, just so the folks at home can hear you.
Yeah. There are a few other things that we'll be doing in the park to upgrade the park. Along the back wall here, we'll be running some cobblestone to delineate the beds. Right now, the beds are not delineated. Anybody can walk into them. So we're going to do some of that work. We're going to totally upgrade the electrical system in the park. There'll be a brand-new service for the benchel, and there'll be electrical outlets throughout the park, the tree in the center and all corners. They won't, they'll be underground in locked boxes, so that, you know, the public can't really use them. If there's a need for the boxes, then we can certainly open them up, energize them at any time. Over here, as you know, as you see where we moved it to, we will have, we will be handicap accessible. This is the handicap ramp that'll bring them from the sidewalk up onto the stage. Also, we have quite a list of plantings here. As you'll see, we will now, right now, with our plantings, we're not really blooming through the season. So with what we've picked, we will bloom, sorry, all the way from June through August and into September. So it should really be nice. Here's all the stuff that we intend to put in there. And as we spoke of earlier, what we will be doing is, in the past, we've really been hard-pressed to spend much time in Peg Noonan Park. We're going to redouble our efforts. We have hired a new turf manager more recently that has been added to my staff. So through, you know, through him and myself, we will, we'll make sure that over the next two years, we get this parcel right up to par with the library parcel. It's always been, you know, a problem line to look at the libraries. You know, we put so much money in the library, and it looks so good up front. And then we go to Peg Noonan, and it's just, we haven't had the resources. But this will be a good kickstart. And as I said, we will redouble our efforts to get going, to make this park the jewel it should be.
Questions from the board?
On the proposed plan here, it does list two shade trees. Are those current shade trees? They just weren't in the other plan that we received, or?
Right. Right now, there's two ginkgo trees there that are struggling. So what we're going to do is we're going to remove those two trees and add two shade trees because of the removal of the Quanzen Cherry here. So these will be significant trees back here. As I said, right now, there's some ginkgos in there, and they're struggling because of compaction and everything. So through, what we're going to do, too, is we're going to put a walkway through here, because the farmer's market, and a lot of people pass things over the wall. So by giving them an area, they won't be standing along the trees and moving stuff along that area. So, you know, that should, that should assist them. That should work.
And I have noticed that the grass in Peg Noonan Park has been better the past few years. Do you think that having the farmer's market there is going to be able to allow that to continue?
Well, you know, it's certainly less compaction, the better. But, you know, once again, you know, if I had my druthers, I guess I wouldn't want to see it there. But, you know, they do help us. They do assist us in the watering of that. We do not have a municipal watering system there, so, you know.
Did we ever get into some of the mats that we talked, I know last spring, we talked about whether there could be mats that they would use to reduce the compaction.
Yes. Last year, they did not. This year, they will. That is part of our plan. So we will pass out the mats, and then we will, actually, we'll work with engineering. Peter made a great idea that we would probably go in there and make a grid over this property. So we'll know where everybody is set up. So we can set up pathways, move pathways, and, you know, say, yeah, you may be here this year, or this month, or whatever. We're going to move you around the park so that we can move the traffic around. And with some of the walk, with this walkway here, we should be able to start to move people to where we want them. Right now, when they exit the park, they're all over the park. So by following this, we're hoping with a meandering walkway, that they'll exit out here next, you know, down these little steps over here and onto the sidewalk.
Rocky, will there still be benches on the performance stage like there are now?
Yes, there will be. There'll be six, six-foot benches. Sorry, three six-foot benches.
Six-foot benches. Okay. And then, my other question is, bluestone. Is this the concrete bluestone?
Yes.
That you're putting in now, as opposed to the real bluestone that just falls apart?
It'll be the stamped concrete, but that's, this isn't, it's not this walkway here. It'll just be in the front of the stage here. In the past, there was, if you remember, there were bricks, there were bricks in front of there. And they, you know, they kept getting popped up in weeds. So we decided, in talking to Peter, that we could probably use a stamped bluestone similar to what he put down in front of him at New Jewelers.
Yes.
So it should, it should look very nice. We're going to try to make it a little darker so it'll match with, you know, with what's out here. So, you know, I think that'll, that'll be nice.
Okay, thanks.
A couple of questions. Rocky, is the big evergreen tree staying in the middle of the park?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So that's just the cobble around it?
Yeah.
And then, you know that you're going to have to, you're going to hand out mats and move the mats around and stuff. Do you have the manpower to do that?
Well.
I mean, I mean, there's additional expense.
Well, we won't, well, we have the mats in stock right now. They were donated to us a few years ago by a company in town here. We will ask that they put them in place. Certainly, I'll be sure, I'll take a walk by now and again to make sure they're using them. But once again, if we come up with a plan that we, you know, we're going to have a maintenance plan. So it'll, you know, we'll ask them that, you know, after thirty days, can we reconfigure this? Which way will work for you? You know, and this is as many mats, and we expect on this date, this is the new, you know, the new setup of the park. And as I said, with the help of Peter's group, we'll certainly be able to set that up.
Great, thanks, Rocky.
Any other questions from the board?
No. I think this is going to be beautiful.
Questions or comments from the audience? I don't, do you need anything from us, Mr. Suss?
I would, once again, ask the board's consent and concurrence with moving forward. It's a very significant improvement. I think it'll expand our ability to serve people in the park. And I think if memory serves me, this will also increase significantly the green area available to the public for whatever events are occurring because of the way this is laid out, and their enjoyment as a result of the new planting. So I would ask for the board's concurrence, if you'd so desire.
Make a motion to support the landscaping plan at Peg Noonan Park and the performance, the new performance stage update at Peg Noonan Park?
Second. But I have another question, if I could. Rocky, on the, on the side of Library Lane, you know, there are stone walls over there. Do they stay?
Yeah, those walls will stay there. And we'll actually do some repair. There's a lot of stones missing in that wall. So we'll actually cement them in, so they, so they won't be popping out. Every time we put them in, people are just popping them off. So we'll, we'll do that. And actually, there's one other thing we are adding. We're adding some legging along the walkway over here, right along with the spike, the spike rack is now. Because right now, we have a light here, the one up here, and it's kind of dark in this area. So now, the whole park should be lit pretty evenly at night. So it should be a plus.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Then I'd like to speak to Mr. Gomes. Is it possible for you to just keep a running record of what this project costs?
Oh, we absolutely will. That's, that is.
So if we would say to you at another time, how much is it costing for everything that you have designed for Peg Noonan Park?
Oh, yeah. I can, I will absolutely be able to tell you that when we're finished. We, that's a practice of ours, anyway. That's, we always do costing.
Well, and then maintaining, and keeping it up?
Well, yeah. With the program that, we do run a Viewworks program, so we're pretty, we can keep, we know, I can easily look up how many hours we spent in Peg Noonan Park this past year, and, you know, even who was in there at any time. So we can certainly do that. It's not a big.
I'm very interested in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
Next item on the agenda, Bike Path Connector License Agreement between the Town of Falmouth and the Steamship Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board will recall, you've carried this on your agenda, thank you for the past few weeks. This is a matter which the board essentially authorized back in September of last year, and have been working with Associate Town Council Pat Harris, Peter McConerty. Peter's put in untold hours in this to my great pleasure and appreciation, as well as Heather Harper's been heavily involved with folks from the Steamship Authority. And that's explained in the background of the piece I just handed out. We have a suggested motion for the board's consideration that is written out with the six conditions that are remaining unresolved items that have been brought to our attention. We've worked through with Peter McConerty's able assistance. And Peter would be available to answer any questions as well. The intent of the Steamship Authority, those members of the board have been out there, you will note that the, essentially, the course of this bikeway connector has already been paved. It is not completed in any final form as yet. And that is reflected in some of the fine-tuning in the points one through six, to make certain that the Steamship Authority, which intends to complete this, from my last notification by them, I believe by the, no later than the end of May, this would help ensure, in working with Peter, that it is done and is safe and worked in the like manner as possible, so that it is truly a, you know, a positive extension of the town's bikeway system. And Peter, any comments you care to make? You're welcome. As always, members of the board may have questions as well, Mr. Chairman.
Questions from the board? All right, well, who'd like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
That the board's selectment approved proposed revised license, subject to the following, and authorize the town manager to execute the revised license as modified below. One, receipt of revisions to the plans attached to the license as Exhibit A and Exhibit B, depicting the licensed area as a twelve-foot wide area running along the proposed eight-foot wide bike path, extending approximately two feet on either side of the bike path, and depicting location and width of the Steamship Authority crossing determinants with the end of the guardrails. Two, receipt of as-built plans showing that the double-sided timber guardrails are located as shown on the most recent site plan dated July seventeen, twenty-twelve, and revised January twelfth, twenty-fourteen. Three, include a provision in the license stating that proposed striping shown on the site plan shall be maintained by the Steamship Authority. Four, include a provision in the license stating that the town has no obligation to repair or maintain the drainage retention area and leaching pit shown on the plans. Five, include a provision that the Steamship Authority shall obtain all necessary permits and shall construct the pedestrian crosswalk in accordance with the plans. And six, the revisions to the plans are subject to review and approval by the town engineer, and revisions to the license are subject to review and approval by Associate Town Council.
Second. Excuse me, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions from the audience?
Mark Federin, Precinct Six. Does this by any chance include the parking on either side of the bike path that the Steamship now uses?
You're thinking the Woods Hole vicinity?
Yeah.
No, sir, this is, thank you. This is strictly the bike path extension that runs from the bike path over here near Palmer Avenue.
Okay.
It was an agreement, excuse me, that we've come to with the Steamship Authority, so that folks who are coming down Main Street do not have to turn down Palmer Avenue and then down Depot Avenue, but can in fact go straight across Catherine Lee Bates Road to reach this connector, which would get them to the bike path.
The license for the parking in Woods Hole along the bike path, is that not up soon?
It will be up soon, and there will probably be some discussion from the board, and I'm sure we'll have.
Just, when does that, when's that date?
Twenty fifteen, is it?
December two thousand and fifteen.
No, it's that far away.
It's that far away, but we need to make plans, because they need to know next year.
So we're planning on doubling the rates? Be crazy if we didn't.
We'll take that into consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, next item on the agenda is the seasonal entertainment license renewal for the Landfall.
Mr. Chairman, for disclosure reasons, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. It also has an entertainment license. Because of the close proximity to this license, to my license, I will recuse myself from the discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. I've been doing too much talking tonight, apparently. Just to make sure everyone understands where we are with this. Mr. Estes, thank you for coming this evening. This is not a public hearing. This is simply a question of renewing the Landfall's entertainment license at this time. In all likelihood, we will probably have to have a public hearing. There have been complaints issued regarding the entertainment license, and so we gave you the opportunity to come in, express your side of the story, if you will, to the board, and we'll go from here. So, without further ado.
Good evening. I'm Donald Estes, co-owner of the Landfall Restaurant in Woods Hole. I want to thank Mr. Murphy, Mr. Sussow, and Mr. Putman for the speedy way to get me in here tonight, put me on the agenda. I believe we have a failure to communicate. The complaint that I know of is from Thomas Crane, who lives in Juniper Point. I've never met him. I've never talked to him. He's never come to me and complained. And I think that I'm up here tonight, just before I'm supposed to open my restaurant for the sixty-ninth season. And feel that there should be better communication, either between Thomas Crane and the Town of Falmouth, and then myself. I would be more than open to give Mr. Crane my telephone number. He can always write me. He can always come over in person, have a chat, or anybody else in Woods Hole who has a complaint. We've worked diligently through our years of having entertainment to comply. My doors have always been open. I've always had communication. Always tried to do the best for the Town of Falmouth and my neighbors. I do know that noise does cross waters. It's just hard for me to believe that the noise that we have on our entertainment nights goes out into great harbor, around the Steamship Authority, and two to three hundred yards away, to really be bothersome. I would welcome Mr. Crane to call me and go over to his property and listen. The complaint that he made, the police went over to the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, which is nowhere where Mr. Crane's property is. This past winter, I've installed new double-pane doors and windows and re-faced the whole front of the restaurant that faces the harbor. We'll continue to monitor the doors to be closed. I have a police detail to help me out, not only with the things that can happen at nighttime, but also to help me say, hey, you guys, it's too loud in there. You should shut, you should turn it down, or shut your doors, or something like that. I'd be willing to buy a noise meter, so when anybody has a complaint, we can take a noise meter. to buy a noise meter so when anybody has a complaint, we can take a noise meter and figure out if the noise level is over a acceptable level. I don't think we need a hearing. I don't think there's that many complaints. And if there is more than one complaint, I wish they'd come to me. Thank you for listening.
You're welcome. To my understanding, there is only the one complaint. And-
The one individual.
The one individual, yes. Any questions from the board?
Quick question. What type of entertainment would you be planning for this summer? Pretty much the same or different?
All kinds of entertainment.
All kinds. I know you have-
Yeah, I love the arts, support the arts, whether it be music, dancing, shows, plays.
And do you use amplified music? Is it amplified for the most part?
Surely, all day long. When you come into my restaurant, there'll be a background music. And when we have entertainment at night, we bring in bands. Absolutely amplified, yes.
For now, yeah.
I guess I'm a little concerned on the two reactions you have to the noise, to Mr. Crane's complaint. One is, I can't believe it's happening at his house. And two, I'll get a noise meter to prove it isn't a problem. But I really think the effort needs to be, if he's concerned about it, we'll turn it down. If he's concerned, I mean, in some ways your response is a little bit more saying, he's wrong, it's not noisy at his house, he's wrong, it's not noisy enough to be a concern. And that worries me a little bit about the response to this. I'm not as concerned, I'm not as convinced that we don't have to have a hearing if that is the way we're going to resolve the conflict. And I guess, what other ways could we resolve a conflict in addition to those? Maybe I can ask it that way.
I guess I'm a little confused on the Falmouth noise bylaw. I don't believe there is such thing as a decibel level.
For, there's actually two pieces here, and there is a limit in terms of the town's noise bylaw. However, your entertainment license actually has specific language that states that no sound shall be heard outside the premises. So therein is one of the, is perhaps the issue, that it's not a question of how much, it's a question of yes or no. And quite frankly, I think that's a difficult standard to meet personally, but unfortunately, right now, that's a part of the license, that every entertainment license has that condition on it. And so at this point, it's something that has to be met. Now-
That's why it's confusing.
Exactly. And like I said, I think it's a difficult standard to meet as well because it's very difficult to say that there will be absolutely no sound heard outside of a building. When someone opens a door, it's inadvertent. People are going to go in and out.
Correct.
But unfortunately, the case is, is that the language is there on the license as issued to all entertainment licenses. In this particular situation, like I said, we may end up having to have a hearing. The question here is, obviously, you need your license renewed. And if we were to move ahead with renewing your license before we had the hearing, it would put the board in an uncomfortable position of perhaps having to change or revoke your license if the facts of the hearing determined that there was an issue that needed to be resolved.
I did talk to Mr. Duffy about this and saying we could grant this license contingent upon what was found at the hearing.
Okay.
That we did have the freedom to be able to grant the license with stipulations of what might occur at the hearing. We can do that.
Okay.
The other two things that I do feel very good about is, one, in the police department's complaint that they've written up is, when there was a complaint, the complaint was told to you and immediately the sound was turned down, the music was turned down. And I also like the suggestion you have of, you know, giving Mr. Crane access to your cell number so if he has a complaint, he can call. As long as the response isn't, well, let me come out there and see it's not noisy, that your response is, we'll turn it down. You know, that would be, I'd be much happier if that's where we're heading as a compromise as opposed to, you know, I don't believe it's really noisy at your house, Mr. Crane.
I just wanted to say, I mentioned it to Town Council as well because normally when you receive a noise complaint regarding a licensed establishment, there is a public hearing and all, and it's noticed, properly noticed, and all parties can be present. But in this case, as Town Council explained it to me, is the current license has expired and this is now a new license. So there is no complaint as yet against this new license. So what we're here to do tonight really is to take up the issue of granting a new entertainment license and then possibly putting some conditions on it, as Doug may have suggested, something that maybe is workable, workable certainly for the Landfall Restaurant to manage their restaurant services. And then also, hopefully, that there would not be a further noise complaint if this is all done properly. So we wouldn't be dealing with a noise complaint unless another complaint came in after you opened for the season. That's my understanding.
That would be great.
Yeah, so, so kind of now-
Is there a way we could try to encourage a meeting of-
Pardon?
Is there a way we could try to encourage a meeting of the Landfall ownership, Mr. Crane, and maybe the town manager just to come up with a plan?
I wouldn't even think you'd need the town manager to get involved. We-
No.
I'll give Mr. Crane a call next week and-
I think we need to-
Give him my telephone number. Be in touch with him eventually. I, I've never met Thomas. I have no idea who he is.
Well, I think as the chairman stated, this is a new license. You know, this happened in the past under an old license. So we know it happened, that there may be a possibility it could happen again. But the whole idea is going forward to have those, the normal conditions that the board places on all licenses, that after a certain time of the night, what is it, like 11 o'clock or something, and I didn't check that before it came, that the noise should not be heard outside the establishment.
It's actually, it's at all times.
It's at all times.
That the sound cannot be heard outside the establishment. In his, in his letter, Mr. Crane actually suggested limiting the entertainment license to 11 o'clock, that the entertainment stop at 11 o'clock. Is that at all something that would work for you?
No, I would not like that at all. We've had an entertainment license in my family's restaurant for 69 years. I depend on keeping my restaurant open for my livelihood, my kid's college education. This is the way I put clothes on her back and roofs over our heads and feed everybody.
Is there a situation that the doors are always closed? But I'm thinking if the doors are closed and the windows are open, I mean, that doesn't make an awful lot of sense. How is that sound contained? I mean, that it doesn't go outside of your building? What is it that you're doing?
Well, in the summertime, when it is hot-
Yes.
We have worked diligently to keep the doors and windows closed on the patio facing the street.
Okay.
To my knowledge, I have never had a complaint from the noise going further out into the water. I really don't have any neighbors on anybody's, on either side. That's why I believe when the police went next door to the Oceanographic Institute, they were close and maybe you could hear music either in that parking lot or on the street. This is where I get confused. Surely, you could hear amplified music in any building if you're right next to it. I don't have any neighbors to the left or to the right or out in the water that I am bothering. So we have worked very, very hard as to not let the music go towards the street.
Can you do the same thing on the water side? Can you keep all the doors and windows closed in order to contain the sound?
I could work harder, I guess, at that, but when it's 80 degrees, 90 degrees, and there's lots of dancing going on, I don't think customers would be so happy with that.
There's got to be something here because there have been other establishments where we've had noise complaints and they have had to add insulation or add vestibules where to try to keep, you know, the door from being open such that the sound comes out, they've, they've done a good job of closing their doors, closing their windows. If it means adding air conditioning, they've had to do that. These are things that you may need to consider. If the board grants the license and if the complaints continue, we've got to try to work this out.
But there aren't complaints. There's one complaint.
If there's one complaint in violation of the license, it's still a complaint in violation of the license. Unfortunately, we have to act on it.
Again, I did install all brand-new doors and windows. Maybe that will help. Again, Mr. Crane, I'll be in touch with him. I will give him a way to communicate with me.
Okay.
I'll do everything I can, but I don't think that we'd be right to take my entertainment license and be the only person in town to go to 11 o'clock, especially after being one of the oldest family restaurants on Cape Cod.
And I tend to agree with you that I think at the very least, we should be giving you the opportunity to show that you can be a responsible and good neighbor.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest, I think we've heard, obviously, from Mr. Estes, that what he's already done is to hear from the people that are here and then maybe the board have their discussion about which way they can move this forward.
Are there questions and comments from the audience?
Can you make a comment?
Sure. Come to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
My name is John Beddinghoff. I'm a full-time resident here in Falmouth, and I've been playing at the Landfall for the better part of a decade. The Estes have done nothing but tried to maintain a positive atmosphere, maintain the level, the volume of music there, and appease anyone that had an issue, which to my knowledge, this is the first one, and I just found out about it this weekend. I'd like to speak on behalf of the residents and visitors of Falmouth and say, you know, they have come to make and support the Landfall as one of the most unique and revered musical experiences on Cape Cod, maybe second to the Beachcomber. And I kid you not, I've been playing music for a lack of a living for about 10 years, and I've traveled all over the country. And the amount of people that come up to me and say, I saw you at the Landfall. That's one of my favorite shows I've ever seen. It's staggering. And the fact that one person's complaint about noise when everyone else in town absolutely reviers this experience on a Sunday night of all nights, literally, bars close in town because everyone's going to the Landfall, from the owners to bartenders. It's known. That has become, my brother and I started playing there eight years ago. Acoustic music is a duo, and now it's hands down the biggest concert of the summer every week. And I really feel like, I don't, I don't, I'm not making light of his complaint. He has the right to feel that way. But, Mr. Jones, to your point, you asked why his response was, I'll get a sound gun and I'll go out and figure this out sonically, because he's the only one complaining. I was a lifeguard for four years at Stony Beach in Woods Hole. Parents, children, they'd bring their whalers around and sit out behind the Landfall so that they could be part of the experience because their kids weren't able to go to the show. There's not a lot of music in town. There's nothing like this, absolutely nothing. And I think, even to question the Estes after generations of successful business there, I, I, it blows my mind. And so I'm here tonight to speak to you and to put it on the record to say that I think, I don't think his concerns should go unaddressed, but I do think it should be weighed in regards to the past and what's happened and the success that that business has had. Again, hands down, I've spent 10 years of my life playing music, and that show is the most known thing I've ever done. So, I don't know. I just wanted to, yeah?
I'm waiting for you to finish. I'm sick.
Okay. I don't know how this works. Yeah, where was I?
Greatest show you've ever seen.
Right here, tonight. No, honestly, I, I review that as, my brother and I literally built that show from nothing. There was the two of us and maybe Rob and the Estes every week. And it takes time. It takes promotion, energy, and instilled a lot into that. And for me to get a call this weekend and say, yeah, Estes might lose their license, it blew me away. So I just need to express how adamantly I, I can't see any reason why they wouldn't be granted the same permission they've had for, well, forever, but for as long as I've been doing it, it's been successful and it's been, I mean, everyone from the winners of the Falmouth Road Race, the Kenyans coming down and getting down. Last summer, we had Jeff Bowman came down and had a night like no other. We still talk about it to this day. So I think one person having a qualm with it being too loud, especially when it's pointed out into Woods Hole, literally, we're pointing the music into Woods Hole. I understand you have to address all concerns, but I think you also need to take into consideration how, what a detriment that would be to this town to impose any, I mean, again, I get it, you have to, you have to have everybody's voice heard, and that's why I'm here tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity. But there's a lot of people that weren't here tonight, and hopefully, if there is another meeting, I guarantee we'll have a line around the block because this is a revered musical experience on Cape Cod. So please do me a favor and take that into consideration when you're making a judgment based on one person's opinion. I've worked really hard to make that show and I'd hate to see it go. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I think the issue is that many of us will say that if you live near the water or you live near any restaurant that has any type of entertainment, you're going to hear what's going on inside that establishment.
No doubt.
And the thing that I would think about in that location is that it isn't as residential as it is two or three blocks away, going away from the water. People are going to hear what's happening in any establishment. I'm not just saying that it is Landfall.
Right.
So it is an issue, and there are several things that they have complained, and it is here that I'm looking at these sheets. So-
Yeah, no, I read, I read them as well, and there were several instances in that where he's asking them to revoke a liquor license based on music. He's asking-
Let's not go back and forth here, folks, so.
No. So my, my point to you is that, that people are disturbed by noises that they hear after 11 o'clock at night in neighborhoods. And that's, that's a given. And, and we hear it. You know, the point that you're saying is the fact that you have developed a program and you want that to continue, and people love it.
Even if I'm not doing it, I think, again, the Smithsonian Magazine just named Woods Hole one of the most desirable small towns in the country. This is a part of it, without a doubt, from the scientists to the Kenyans to the people out in Pennsance Point. I had a number of them having dinner last year while we're setting up. We work hard to move all the tables, you know, interrupting people while they're having their family dinner for the year. And here I come with a bunch of speakers and drums and moving them out of the way, and they stuck around and had a blast. There was no complaints. Furthermore, my question to you is, that's a public dock, correct?
No.
The backside of it?
The backside is, I believe it's open to the public in terms of-
Access.
Access because of the wetland regulations.
Okay. So if, if there's a bunch of people out on the back deck and they're there by right and they're making noise- and they're making noise, and that exceeds the decimal level acceptable, is that something?
That would be a separate issue, because in this situation, the entertainment license specifies that the sound cannot be heard outside of the premises.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify...
Understood. But unfortunately, there are different, if not conflicting, rules in this situation, and what we have to go by is the entertainment license specifically states, and this is the same for all establishments that have an entertainment license, is that the sound may not be heard outside of the premises. So in essence, it has to be contained within the structure.
I just have a statement that, you know, we're really dealing here tonight with a new license, and an entertainment license, and I think that we should move on and make a decision. I think that if this were a hearing, I think the Estes have said, "This is what's going on. This is what I've done. I've put in new windows. I put in new doors." They know the rules, and I think that I would make a motion that we grant the license.
Before we take motions, I want to finish hearing from folks.
Okay.
It was your suggestion after all.
Well, because time's marching on.
I understand that as well. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
One point I do want to make is that I agree that it's a new license. I do think that we may not have done what we should have done in response to the complaints from Mr. Crane, whether it's the police or the Board of Selectmen. He needed to get some response. Either he was giving information to the Estes that this was going on, and I think there was a failure to communicate, as Mr. Estes said to begin with. If we grant this license, and then there is a complaint, we are going to have to respond very differently and potentially have a hearing immediately.
That's right.
And so anything you guys can do to make sure that when the license is granted, he doesn't have complaints, or he has resource beyond calling the police, that will protect your issue better than anything.
Okay.
It's like to be treated like everybody else.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's exactly right. And that he would be treated like anyone else would be treated, and that's the way it should be.
Yep.
Yes, so I move that we approve the entertainment license for the Landfall for 2014, and that the times remain the same as the license to the previous year, the times and conditions.
And what were the times from the...
Whatever they were from last year, that the entertainment license goes to 1:00 AM, and that's the same condition as the previous year. They know what the issues are, and hopefully, you can work them out with Mr. Crane if he has any issues, and I'm sure you will.
Second.
After sixty-nine years, I think you know how to manage your business, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just would like to make a note that the letters that we have from Mr. Crane are dated in November and December, and one of the letters does mention complaints in August and September.
The December's 2012.
Right. And the November is 2013, and it mentions complaints in August and in September of 2013. But I think the most important thing is that we need to make sure that Mr. Crane understands that if there is an issue, and if it's all right with you, perhaps you could present your contact information to the town, and the town can pass it on to Mr. Crane, as you suggested, and then he could contact you if he does believe that there's sound coming from your building.
I believe Mr. Suso sent me his letters. I should have his heading. I'll be writing him a letter probably after I open the restaurant on Friday.
Okay.
I'll have more time then.
Okay. And I think, like you say, perhaps communication is the key part here.
In that letter, I'll give him my communication.
All right.
Welcome him to my open office.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any last discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have a good season.
Let's see. Policies, Procedures, Annual Calendar. I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity to look at the suggestions that Mr. Jones has provided at this point. Maybe we'll try to schedule this for sometime earlier in the evening, so we can more closely review that. I would like to make sure that everyone does review the calendar, and again, this is nothing new. It's simply putting down on one document what we're doing throughout the course of the year. And one of the things, as I was looking at this, I realized that what we don't have on here and what we should have on here is the timeline for the town manager's annual review. And again, this would just be something that, as the board comes in...
It's in the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but having a document where someone who sits down with the board and says, "Okay, what are we doing in April? What are we doing in May? What are we doing in June?" Again, there's nothing new here. It's just simply putting on paper what we've always done.
I sort of see the annual calendar as the thing that was written in pen that aren't going to change just as a guideline, saying, "Don't forget, this has to get done."
Just a couple of suggestions. Number one, in August, it's not always the case, you know, it's the town meeting warrant schedule, that sometimes goes to the first meeting in September. Another thing is that we're missing here is in December, we typically have our fee hearings.
Ah, that's right.
November.
November.
Remember December, right.
Yep. Thank you very much. That's why I asked everyone to look at this.
And license renewals?
That would, yes, that would be December, and then, that's a good point. License renewals also come back, seasonal license renewals come back in March.
I think Diane has a calendar with all this on it, too. The fee hearings and all that, and she has a...
I didn't know whether this is a working document.
I know. Maybe we should ask her to even copy hers.
You know what?
Because I think it might have more on it than this.
That's a good point. Has anyone asked for her input?
And also the committee appointment. She has all those, an entire calendar for the whole year.
I think she has a calendar. I don't know if there's a document such as this which is...
No, but she could translate it, I think.
Yeah, and certainly we can ask her to take what she has and whatever we might have here, because one of the things that I don't think she's going to have on there, for example, is the town manager review, which should be done in November.
That's true.
She may have, for example, license renewals, because they have to send that documentation out.
October, let's put it October.
Yeah, that is actually, usually we do that over two weeks in October.
What's that?
The fee hearings. But again, just no need to, we don't need to go into a lot of detail tonight, but I just want to make sure that's on everyone's radar, so that we can make sure that incoming board members have all of that information. And the meeting procedures, if you all want to offer suggestions and redline it, that's fine. I understand the discussions about style, but obviously, there are some things there that may be of some value. The procedures for hearings, that is something that we do need to solidify, because, again, hearings are legal proceedings, and we need to have a consistent process where we are taking testimony, where we are closing the hearing, where we are making a decision, and then justifying that decision. Because we've been bitten a few times in the recent past where we've made a decision that was contrary to what the law allowed, or that was lacking in sufficient documentation justifying the decision.
Can I make a couple of suggestions if you want to move forward with this? Number one, under meetings and procedures, don't put in, you can put in the two meetings a month, but the first and the third is already blown up, because we changed that this year.
It doesn't always work, yeah.
Yeah, right. So just take that out. And then, if you go on to procedures of hearings, my suggestion is you take this and you send this over to town council, and ask him, you know, we're not attorneys, we play them on television, and, you know, even though you developed it, and I might comment on it, I think we want legal advice that this is specifically covered.
Excellent idea.
For the hearings, I would still want us to have the survey guidelines. I wouldn't want someone to come back to us and say, "Your hearing wasn't valid because you didn't, because you made a mistake in following the procedures."
That's very true.
And that's the reason why, for both the procedures for the hearings and for the meetings, I think it's a very nice draft, I think it's a really good layout of what would be a good hearing, but once it's a policy procedure, then to go against it is setting ourselves up for...
I think the MMA has done that in the Selectmen's manual, has laid out very, you know, very briefly what the hearing process is, based on the law.
Because I have no disagreement with what this layout is at all. I think it makes a lot of sense, but I worry about where we set up a standard, and if we don't follow it, we then are setting ourselves up for criticism.
Well, and I think getting town council's opinion is an excellent idea. I can tell you that this is actually slimmed down, if you will, for lack of a better term. If you look at the procedures that the zoning board of appeals uses, it's a much more detailed document, much more detailed process. So this, I don't even know if this is actually adequate, to be honest with you, but I think Mr. Murphy has an excellent suggestion there, that getting town council's opinion would be paramount.
And quite candidly, I follow up what Doug says. Maybe this would be best served as a set of guidelines from town council, not a procedure voted by the Board of Selectmen, because if we miss something, you're exactly right. You didn't bring that, you know, Board of Selectmen's procedures state, and you missed that. Now is it subject, is the hearing subject to review just because of that?
Right.
That's a good call.
All right. Any last comments or questions on that? All right. And then we have the plan of action for the town manager's contract. As we have discussed, and there's no real documentation here, Mr. Suso's contract is going to end in November, and we've obviously had, there's been some interest expressed by members of the board to begin the process of renewing that now. So how would we like to proceed?
I would appreciate getting some feedback from someone who's done it in the past. I know that we probably will not be getting this done and finished by the time our current board is in place.
Oh, we have to have it finished with this board.
You definitely want that.
Absolutely.
First of all, it requires six months before. His contract requires...
Yes, you have to notice, you give prior notice that you're going to either renew or not renew the contract. What we did last time was, I did the contract with not our town council, because you can't, because our charter says the town manager hires councils, so therefore, we can't use councils toward the town manager. So I had special counsel do that, work with me on the contract. Then Kevin did the negotiations, because under the new open meeting law, you cannot have a subcommittee of the board when the action that the subcommittee is proposing has to be voted on by the full board. So only one person can do this, and I'd be happy to do it, to sit with them, because you're leaving, so you probably should not do it, you know?
Whatever. I just think it should be just one person go and basically say to the town manager, "Look, everyone should get a copy of it, first of all, and have..."
Yeah, everybody should have a copy of the contract.
...the contract. I mean, there were some things that we kind of were a little bit shy on originally. One was the severance. We pulled that back, because it was a new relationship. That might have a little flexibility this time. This is an open meeting, so we'll talk about it a little bit, the number of years for a contract. And I don't think this will, you know, as you go on...
There's not a lot to change.
Nothing else really much...
Unless the town manager wants to change something. He may want to change something.
Right, that's right. So that's the point. Person would really just talk about those things. We're not reinventing the wheel here. I think we're really just redoing a contract for a specific number of years and making a couple of adjustments.
Yeah, that's not, that's exactly what it is. It's not that complicated.
No, it's an extension.
So I think that we should look at it in terms of anything that the Selectmen would want to change. Tony, where am I at, Tony? Julian, I've got Tony on my brain, can look at it in terms of what he might like, a small sit-down with one member of the board, and then bring it back to the board, and we're done.
I would move to authorize Mary Pat to meet with Julian and go over the contract.
I'll second that, and I think that can be rather expedient.
Do that within a week, right? We can get that done in a week.
We have two weeks before our next meeting.
And then, by the next meeting, we should almost be ready to do it. Well, what is our next meeting? April 14th? We'll have it ready for April 14th, and you will all have it ahead of time, so if you have any comments, you can get them back to me.
That's good. That is very good.
Do you need the services of outside counsel for this?
I don't think so, not at this point. I think most of the legal issues were already taken care of. Julian, of course, has his own counsel, so he can talk to his own councils, but if something comes up...
I don't think that this requires any counsel, because this is something that's already been reviewed by both councils. This is just an extension of a contract, which would...
Basically.
...come down to the number of years, and maybe a couple of adjustments within the contract. Besides that, they're really, unless we're changing language, a lot of language.
Right.
If we are, then we may need that. But Jill know that is the person that's going to sit down and talk to him.
Yeah.
Can I ask for a modification of the motion to include also that we are formally notifying Mr. Suso that we want to renew his contract? Because that is, we have to give formal notification, so I think it's, we need to do that, as well as to appoint Ms. Flynn to serve as the negotiator for the board.
Well, I will move then to...
He made the original motion. He's just asking to modify it.
That's acceptable to you, Doug?
I actually think it should be two separate motions.
Okay.
Okay, we can do it that way. Well...
Okay, so let's, you've already got one on the table.
The first one on the table is to appoint Ms. Flynn to negotiate, if you will, an extension with Mr. Suso. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous?
And maybe the order is in reverse, to now notify the town manager that we would like to extend his contract.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, that we'd like to formally notify the town manager that we would like to extend his contract. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? It is unanimous.
Thank you, Mrs. Morton. Look forward to that.
Put that to bed now, huh?
Indeed. Thank you.
All right, so with that, any reports from the individual Selectmen?
Yes, I'm going to be brief. Tomorrow is National Service Day. Mayor's National Service Day, National Service meeting, AmeriCorps. And even though the county commissioners are not mayors, we are celebrating National Service Day. We did this last year. We have a bus tour, and with the executive director of AmeriCorps and some of the AmeriCorps staff, we toured four projects that they have worked on this past year, and this year, we're going to Harwich, and where they have four projects in Harwich. So anybody who would like to come on the bus tour, the bus leaves at 8:30 tomorrow morning, and it returns to the county complex at noon, and we have snacks and water and, you know, all kinds of goodies along the way, and we have a great time, if you'd like to see some of the projects that AmeriCorps has done. And thank AmeriCorps. And we were taking our videographer with us, and so it'll be televised, and actually, and then we got a chance to really, really honor and thank the AmeriCorps volunteers for what they do. It's really tremendous, and I just wanted to mention that.
Couple of things to follow up on that. I don't know how you get out of it, but I ended up delivering meals on wheels last year as the Falmouth rep doing that same thing, so...
I did it this year.
Probably because I had to work.
I did it this year. I did it a couple of weeks ago, or was it March 15th or something? And I went with a guy who is just absolutely incredible. I've done it once before, but I decided that, because the commissioners decided we were all going to do it in our own towns. And I did Woods Hole, you know, the main section of town, in a couple of hours. It was great, and it's so awesome meeting all the people. You can see people who are living at home, some of them can manage fairly well by themselves for certain things. Sometimes they can't, they get into periods where they can't, so they have meals on wheels. Sometimes they have them anyway, because it's not safe for them to cook or whatever. But it's just a wonderful experience, and it's on a particular day every year. It's always in March. Ever, so next March, if you're all still here, you should really do it, because it's fun. I had a great time.
One other thing that I didn't mean to get sidetracked, and I had it on my notes, Mr. Fineman brought it up today. The parking lot contract does come up at the Steamship Authority a year from this December. However, the Steamship Authority needs to know roughly almost over a year in advance, because that is for contract parking. They send that out well in a year in advance for that. Whether this board wants to do it or not, I know the model last time was to have some representatives of the community involved in the talking of that contract, because the bike path and everything else were involved in that. So it might be something that the board might want to talk about, putting together a committee in some form or fashion to work, to come up with some ideas of what they'd like to see accomplished with that.
And we should have a copy of what that contract is. I have looked at it a long time, do you?
Yeah, I have a copy, and that came out. As a follow-up report on Steamship Authority issues, because of my involvement in the business in Woods Hole, both the businesses... and we are hoping as a group that we can bring back collectively a group, a plan that will satisfy the community as well as satisfy the business community down there. So, I'll keep you informed as that comes down.
Anyone else? Any questions for Mr. Suso? I think we've already gone over everything that was in his report.
Just the-
Can I touch on just two items briefly?
Sure.
Chairman, uh, thank you. I wanted to thank the Departments of Public Works, Police and Fire for the usual excellent work during Wednesdays, this past Wednesday's early spring blizzard. I'm pleased we were able to maintain Town Hall and all related offices open for the public with business as usual. Interestingly, we had several residents visit to transact business in spite of the winter storm, and frankly, that's not unusual. Once again, I want to extend my thanks to the Mass, Massachusetts Clean Energy Center in granting Falmouth financial assistance in furthering the operation of the, of town's wind turbines in a responsible and businesslike manner. This is indeed a recognition of the ongoing strong partnership with the Commonwealth in the development of an alternative energy facilities, and my sincere thanks to the board for your steadfast, unwavering support for this several-month negotiation process with Mass CEC. Your unwavering support frankly set the foundation for this extraordinary action. I thank the board for that, and that concludes my report. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, I think we've reached the end of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposition? None.
the campus of Atria Woodbrier offers the standard of senior living, long preferred by the most discerning older adults on Cape Cod. Atria Woodbrier Place, a new state-of-the-art building, offers independent and assisted living options with luxurious amenities and environmentally friendly design and construction. Atria Woodbrier, 389 Gifford Street, Falmouth, 508-495-5500.